Good afternoon. Before we begin our agenda, we have a presentation by Carolyn Grossman-Marr on the latest from our regional planning division.
Thank you, Ryan. Good morning, good afternoon, commissioners. Am I going to get a presentation? Okay, great. For those of you I haven't met, I'm Carolyn Grossman-Marr. I had regional planning here at DCP. I'm going to speak about our most recent report, Geography of Jobs, Volume 2, which you all have on your desks this morning. I'm going to start. Nope, still no? Okay. Well, I'll just start for those of you who haven't heard the first presentation on the Geography of Jobs, Volume 1, that we gave last year. Just to step back and give a little bit of context, regional planning is a division that was created at City Planning as a 1-NYC recommendation coming out of the 2015 plan. Our former commissioner, Carl Weisbrod, believed that the city, in order to achieve its vision for the next generation of being a prosperous, sustainable, and equitable city, really required having more planning capacity around understanding our place in the region and working across borders to affect regionally scaled planning issues. For the last three years, we've been working to achieve that vision and really create the capacity around understanding and interacting with our neighbors on regional planning. Here we go. Really along five broad tacks, connecting with other practitioners, which we've been doing fairly regularly. We were very blessed to have Commissioner Ortiz join us at our last Regional Planning Leadership Network just a few months ago. We've been focusing every six months or so with planning directors from around the region on key issues. The last one was on retail continuity, but we've had others on housing and economic issues as well. A lot of work on understanding regional data, working to instill this in New York City's planning activities, collaborating across borders where we count on issues like the census and getting counts, and using all of that to inform our regional policy and capital as we understand these macro trends of how the region is growing and functioning. The first report we did really started to lay a groundwork for how we understand the region and what is happening at the macro tri-state level. We released that report last year at a convening hosted by the New York Building Congress with about 70 tri-state government, nonprofit, and business stakeholders from around the region, really, I think, great support for the work that we're doing in the city to help others understand what's happening and how the city and the rest of the region function together from an economic and growth perspective. The second report, in addition to updating one more year of annual employment data, really takes a deeper look at the nuances that have been happening over the 20-year, two economic cycles, both in individual sectors of the economy, as well as looking at the housing production and housing jobs balance as it's changed over time. There's four major findings in the report, and I'm going to walk through each of them fairly quickly. So, the first finding is that job growth in all five New York City boroughs really is still driving the post-recession economic gains of the region. And though growth is slowing in the last few years as we've passed the peak of our economic cycle, the city is continuing to outpace the rest of the region. So, reminder to ground us in what do we mean by the region? We're looking at 31 counties in our tri-state area, North New Jersey, the Hudson Valley, Southwest Connecticut, Long Island, and the city. It's about just under 23 million people living in this region. New York City is 8.4 million, or just under 40% of the total regional population. We have just over 9 million homes, again, 40% of that in New York City, although the majority of rent are colored in the darker orange color on this map, are in New York City. And you can see the historic pattern of renter property is how the region developed over time. Clusters of downtowns around train lines, just across the Hudson River, along the coast in Connecticut, and up through the Hudson Valley, whereas places like Long Island are much more characterized by owner-occupied as they got built out in the post-war suburban, auto-oriented booms. And, of course, our region is a very large interconnected economic ecosystem, producing $2 trillion in GDP, half of which is inside the city, half of which is outside of the city. As our commissioner likes to say, if we were a country, our economy would be the size of Russia. And we have very significant diversity of employment around the region in office, local services, institutional, industrial sectors. And you'll see those four breakdowns throughout the presentation. And that diversity, you know, really is achieved in all of the sectors. Office jobs are slightly skewed towards the city. We have half of the office, 3 million office jobs in the city. We have 44% of all of the eds and meds institutional jobs. We have slightly less of the industrial concentration because they tend to require larger components of land. So, we see more of that outside of the city, but still 29% of regional industrial jobs in the city, and nearly a million local services jobs in the city of the total 2.6 million. But we skew higher in terms of the overall wages gained in the city. We are a region of $700 billion, much of which comes from our office employment, 62% of which the wages of office are gained within the city. Similarly, we have 45% of the $116 billion paid out in institutional jobs earned within the city, $39 billion of industrial, $45 billion of local services earned within the city. So, moving on to what's happening now, since the Great Recession, our region has added more private sector jobs than any other major U.S. metro, a net gain of 924,000 jobs. But it's about growing at the U.S. average, about 1.1% a year. U.S. is growing at 1% a year. We're growing faster than some of our Northeast counterparts, just about the same as Boston, a little faster than DC, much faster than Chicago or Detroit, but much slower than places like San Francisco and Seattle, Miami, and the Texas cities, which are growing as a metro about double the rate of our metro employment growth. So, knowing that New York City is doing so well economically, and as at peak employment and lowest unemployment rate in recorded history, we wanted to understand what was happening within the region that was really causing the whole metro to look at par. And what we're seeing now, looking at employment growth for every year, for the last 20 years, with New York City in blue and the other portions of the region in the grays, you can see that in the prior -- yeah, here we go. In the 2000s bust, we saw dot-com and 9/11 really causing a lot of loss in New York City and moderate gains back in the 2000s, but it's much more split. In the Great Recession, New York City lost, but lost less than the rest of the region. And in the recovery, we've had very stable growth for the last eight years of about 140,000, 150,000 jobs in the region every year, and in every single one of those years, New York City is the majority of employment gain. So, we're 40% of regional jobs, but we're more than 50% of regional gain in every single year. You can see that we're shifting towards an economy that is more New York City-focused. This is just looking at those percentage growth rates for the region. You can see, again, just on the average basis, we dipped less, and we've recovered more steadily as a city than the U.S. or the rest of our region comparatively. And when you look at where that's happening, it's a combination of changes in the five boroughs. Pre-recession, Manhattan actually lost jobs because of the dot-com and 9/11 busts. So, it's not showing up in the pre-recession gains, but we see outer borough gains accounting for a third of all of the 220,000 jobs that were gained in that economic cycle. Flipping to today, you see a much, much more prosperous economic cycle, and New York City accounting for a much greater share of the regional gains due to a resurgent Manhattan, now a third of the regional gains, as well as significantly larger shares for Brooklyn and for Queens. And that's really, that's carrying over to wage gains as well, where you see the city moving from about 46% of all wages in the city in 2000 to now paying out over 50% of all wages in the region. So, in other words, as we've gained jobs and gained value, other parts of the region are not keeping pace. So, finding two, moving on to the kinds of growth that we're seeing, where it's occurring by different industry macro sectors. I'm going to give a very brief overview, but I want to note that the report goes into much greater detail in each industry group. So, looking at the composition of the region's private sector employment changes for those 20-year periods, so each year engaged, now broken up by the sector bases. So, office in blue, institutional in yellow, industrial in purple, and local services in green. You can see that office, in blue, lost jobs in that first period, that's that dot-com bust again, gained back moderately, lost in the finance crash, and then has really gained back consistently to the tune of about 50,000 jobs a year for this whole economic cycle. Institutional jobs have been relatively immune to the downturns and have grown very consistently in the region until the last few years where they've really increased their share. Industrial jobs have lost for most of this period, but now we're seeing some growth back buoyed mostly by construction, warehousing, and logistics. Local services have gained in every year except the Great Recession, but are really starting to wane in the most recent years. And so, you can see that there's been a real diversity in the growth that's occurring in this economic cycle, but the geography of it has not been diverse in all sectors. For the office jobs, all of the gain has been in New York City, with some of the, with other parts of the region in net seeing some office decline. Institution has been relatively split. Industrial has gained somewhat in New York City with declines in other parts of the region. Local services has been split, with the net result that the city is gaining the largest, highest-wage jobs in a much more diverse field, while other parts of the region are really dependent on those institutional and local services jobs. And a slightly more detailed breakout as well. And, of course, because the office, the wages are most concentrated in those office sectors, we're seeing those largest wage gains accruing to the city as well, but we're also seeing disproportionate wage gains in other parts of the industry, particularly things like local services, which are the lowest of these sector groups in average wages, but New York City is disproportionately seeing higher wage gains in those areas, likely due to accommodation and hotels. So, moving away from the job side and now moving towards the people side, to really understand what's happening in labor force and talent that may be driving some of these changes, we're seeing that, as remains the case in this report, the region's labor force is aging outside of New York City. New York City and North Jersey are doing the yeoman's work at creating new housing, and labor force changes are really accruing to that, whereas areas that are not seeing housing are seeing the most of the aging in place. So, first, our labor force overall is growing. You can see in blue here, the gains on the map are really all across the region. We've seen 550,000 new laborers in our labor force since the recession. That's really tracking U.S. average a little bit higher. New York City is growing much faster than the U.S. average, but we've seen those gains fairly well widespread. Labor force growth is coming from two different places: people staying in the labor force longer and new entrants to the labor force. In the U.S., most of the gain, 94% of the labor force growth, is coming from people staying in the labor force past 55. In New York City, it's only half that, 45%. Other parts of our region look much more like the rest of the United States in seeing their growth coming from those larger entrants. So, to isolate the effects of longer work lives, we look at just the younger cohort, 25 to 54, in the labor force change over time. And it's a much different picture. As it was in the first report, we see 41% gained, sorry, 41,000 new workers in the region, just about the U.S. average, but a much more bifurcated picture between New York City and the rest of the region. New York City added 200,000 young workers, about 16 times the U.S. average. Other parts of the region in total are seeing declines. And you can see in the map, places like Hudson County, places like the rail towns in New Jersey, places like the Connecticut, Stanford, Bridgeport, New Haven, Hudson Valley towns pop out as increases, but on total are not offsetting the net declines in the other suburban areas of their regions. So, that's how we're getting to those declines. Only five counties in our region saw net increases in their young labor force. Brooklyn tops that list at 94,000 new young workers. Manhattan, Bronx, Queens, Hudson, New Jersey are the only others. Everyone else saw declines at the county level. And again, that seems to be related to what we're seeing in housing production. Since the recession, the region has permitted 456,000 new units. 197,000 of that was permitted in New York City. 183,000 of that was permitted in North New Jersey. And you can see Hudson County is a part of that, but it's a lot of the rail towns really spreading out in all of the areas that are in commuting distance to New York City. And then pockets of it in Connecticut. Again, the cities seem to pop out here. This is Stanford, Norwalk, Bridgeport, New Haven, Danbury, some Hudson Valley locations as well, very little on the Long Island side overall. It's important to understand that everyone has declined in housing production in this cycle on average. In the pre-recession, New York City was producing 26,000 units on average in a year, and now we're producing 20,000. And you see declines happening across the region in this economic cycle. It seems to be tied to the kinds of housing that we're producing in the region. The Great Recession, of course, was tied to single-family housing markets, and we saw declines in single-family housing being produced all across the region, including in New York City, though we were producing very little of it. That's the yellow here. We were producing a more significant component of two-to-four-unit buildings, particularly in places like Staten Island, and that's really declined in the post-recession period. But we saw significant declines in single-family housing, and really an end to some of the suburban sprawl that we were seeing through the exurbanization up to 2007. We really saw that fall off in this economic cycle. The parts of the region that replaced that loss of single-family housing production with multifamily housing production have fared better in keeping their housing numbers up. So, New York City saw only a 25% decline, unlike the region's overall 30% decline, because we slightly increased our share of multifamily or larger building housing permits. The same in North Jersey. They were able to increase the size of their red here, made up for some of the loss in the lower density. Places like Long Island produced less multifamily housing, and so while they were a smaller component of our overall regional production share, they have had steeper declines in their overall production rates, similarly in the Hudson Valley and Connecticut as well. So, finding four is really looking at the combined confluence of an explosive economic picture with a constrained housing market. This is just mapping total employment for every year, net jobs added in the region from 2000 to 2018 against the housing units permitted. And we, again, see that story of really strong economic growth continuing on a housing market that's been relatively immune to the effects of that economic change, and in fact has seen declines due to the housing market. So, we've gone from a region that, on average, in the last economic cycle, permitted 2.2 new homes for every net new job we added, to a region that is permitting 0.5 homes for every net new job we've added. And the imbalances between those two really play out differently in different parts of the region. New York City, as the home to most of that new economic growth, has the largest new imbalances, as our housing has stayed relatively the same or declined slightly next to that very explosive employment growth. North Jersey, on the other hand, has seen basically the same housing and very little jobs, and so that net increment of extra housing, so to say, is really feeding our economy. We think it has implications in our commuting numbers. Long Island in the other direction, producing a lot more jobs than housing. Hudson Valley, in relative balance. Connecticut seeing much more housing without much economic growth at all. This is in total what it looks like over a 20-year period. We've added 360,000 more jobs than we have added housing units. North Jersey really dramatically the opposite. Places like Connecticut also somewhat out of balance. Long Island somewhat out of balance. And as I said, it really plays out in our commuting numbers. The largest gains are still people living and working in New York City. We've seen a 29% growth in that population since 2000, 29%. But we're seeing a faster growth rate in people coming from the West, where there's a lot of housing but many less jobs. So, we're seeing 40% more people crossing the river back, again, in a place where we have some of the least infrastructure to support that growth. Conversely, from Long Island, where we are adding significant infrastructure as a region to bring more population into the city, we've seen relatively flat commuting, and in fact some increases in reverse commuting. So, with that, I'm happy to take questions, and I remind you that, in addition to the report being online, we have Metro Region Explorer, the tool we've built to house all of this data and share with our partners around the region. It's interactive. You can go click and check all the different cities, see who's producing what housing or who's added jobs, and it's also downloadable as well. And we encourage you to play with it and share it as you see fit. Thank you.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Delaues.
Seems like a really good argument for mandatory inclusionary housing across the board, if you ask me.
You have to get the units in order to have the inclusionary units.
Commissioner Ortiz.
I mean, actually, you said what I was thinking. You know, the housing market hasn't kept pace with job growth, and so what, I mean, I guess the takeaway for me in the position we sit is the need for the production of housing, for sure, but at all levels, right? You know, because we see a lot of pressure on market rate units, and so we see prices going up. I live in a community, Jackson Heights, that's seeing, you know, rapid change from folks moving, you know, from other places, because this is a place that remains affordable. But my question for you has to do with housing preferences. You presented a little bit about single-family homes versus multifamily units, and I know, you know, the younger cohort is okay living in an apartment, you know, one-to-two-bedroom apartment, but as, you know, millennials marry, have kids, want many of the things that, you know, others want for their children, more space, bedroom, a playground, you know, backyard. Do we see that being a problem, where the growth in multifamily units doesn't necessarily reflect what this largest cohort, demographic cohort, is looking for? Is anyone looking at that?
I think a lot of people are looking at that. I think there's a lot of national scholarship on my generation's housing preferences and whether we will, you know, move towards being homeowners, and whether the lack of homeownership is really related to debt carrying and the unaffordability of it, or whether it's truly a cultural preference. I think there's a lot to crack in that, and I guess I would step back, and to Commissioner Delaues's point as well, this is a starting point, but not an ending point in answering the question of how do you have enough housing to match the needs, right? The amount of jobs is one way to sort of match that, but it's obviously very coarse, and it doesn't start to get to the issue of how much does a job pay, and what can you afford, and how much does the housing cost, and what kind of housing would you even want, right? So, there's a lot to unpack here that I think this report only scratches the surface at, but we're very excited that we're hearing a lot of interest in continuing to really dive into the housing issues on a more regional scale. So, I think there's more to get at that. Anecdotally, without a lot of data to answer a lot of those questions yet, I would say we're not seeing that multifamily housing that's being built in our region is vacant. We're not, right? We're seeing that where it is built, it is being occupied, and that, if anything, there still appears to be an undersupply, and that areas where it's proximate to New York City, right, within our sort of housing shed, there seems to be a fairly strong market for it. So, while it certainly must be the case that many people still want single-family homes, and many single-family homes are also still occupied, it does not appear that we're, that we've vastly misjudged the market, or that real estate developers are vastly misjudging the market today in terms of what is being supplied. Is that?
Yeah, and it makes sense at this moment in time. So, we see, I guess, as we look at the region and we think about, you know, lots of communities up and down the Hudson River, where you have a lot of folks concerned about reinvesting in their homes because they don't want their taxes to go up. I mean, we're working in communities where we see that, and, you know, it seems like there's opportunity to offer a single-family product, and, you know, not many sources of financing to improve the existing products that are there. It's just an interesting issue.
It's true. I would also say that there's a lot of environmental value in the fact that we have stopped sprawl for the greatest extent, right? And that, certainly from New York City's perspective, I mean, we have not been encouraging single-family housing development for land constraint reasons for many years, right? There are places, obviously, in the city where we do have that context, but we haven't been creating many more of them. And I would say, within our commuter shed, and we're thinking about how, you know, how do people access our job shed, you know, that I think, thinking about that from at least a transit-oriented perspective, that doesn't necessarily mean single-family has no role in that, but certainly we need to be thinking about efficiency, and as the region grows in a very constrained space, doing that in a strategic way, and clustering around train stations at whatever density makes that possible, seems like it's in our best interest.
Commissioner Capelli.
This might be slightly off-topic, but do we know how many people who have jobs who don't have housing, who don't have permanent housing?
We know in New York City, right? We know the total census count of homeless residents, but I would also --
That are employed.
Oh, that are employed. I don't have that number. I do believe that New York City has that number. And, but I would also just say, there's a lot of other complicated things, right? There may be people who are in substandard housing. There may be people who have, who are in overcrowded housing. There, right, there's a lot, I think, going on in --
And that was my follow-up question, was how many were in, like, sharing a place because they can't get a place?
Yeah. Well, Howard has a thing, a saying, I think he puts in presentations, right, which is when you have a constrained housing market, there's only, there's only places, there's only a few places people can be, right? They can either be in a unit, they can, you can have too many people in a unit, you can leave the region entirely, or you can be out of a unit, right? There's, so I think all of those conditions and a combination of those conditions are clearly persisting as a result of not having enough housing to meet the number of workers we have.
It's hard to count, because like in Nitro, for example, a lot of doubled-up apartments that people don't want to report on, but they check the, by checking the water consumption, they can tell that they're doubled up. So, it's a hard number to, hold on.
Our sanitation commissioner also points out that they have very good metrics based upon the volume of garbage, and she's made that same point with respect to some Nitro campuses.
Some of this may be that some people are holding more than one job, and that some of that growth is related to a slight uptick in, you know, the number of workers in a single unit. How much of that is healthy and unhealthy? These are all things that I think we have yet to unpack. Again, you know, I think we're humble enough to say that this is just scratching the surface on some really interesting questions, and that's, we think, it, you know, points towards additional research, particularly in understanding the housing challenges on a regional scale.
We've got a whole group of commissioners here, having to work two jobs to make a living.
We won't ask you about your housing situation, Commissioner Burden. Commissioner Delaues.
I just wanted to follow up on your point. I think this is a great jumping-off point for those regional conversations, and I'm just wondering if you could, maybe I missed it because I missed the first part of your presentation, if you can tie like that. And then also, you know, in the housing, in the most recent housing vacancy survey that HPD did, you know, the number of pitatares also went up, so there are tens of thousands of units that are technically, you know, there, but not really occupied.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would, you know, I think it's important to point that out, because from a policy perspective, we should be discouraging that, given the constraints that we have.
I think it is absolutely fair to say there's a lot of noise in all of these numbers, right? Permits is also not completions, so it looks a little bit different. You'll notice that there's a big bump in 2015, right? That's the last 421A expiration. There's a big overhang of permits from that, too. So, there's a lot of stuff going on in this. Again, it's like a coarse way to get at a problem, but there's a lot of more refined ways to do it. To your earlier point, one of the things that we've been doing for the last three years is trying to bring people together across the region to share what we know and to start conversations. We've been incubating now for three years a regional planning network of the planning directors of the largest municipalities around the region, from Newark to New Haven. I mentioned that Commissioner Ortiz joined us for our last session on retail, and one of the concerns, obviously, people are seeing is decline in retail streets, and so we had a really engaging conversation about that. We've had several conversations about housing. We've also brought, we had some special sessions where we engaged with some of the regional leadership on housing in particular, both around 1-NYC and around where we live, the HPD process. We briefed our regional partners on that and really asked for their engagement as part of that process as well. Through that, I think we are continuing to really hear interest in thinking about this. Certainly, the data and capacity that we are able to bring to these questions is something that we find a lot of eagerness with regional partners to engage in further. So, it's not a full question. It's something that we're really working on to figure out where that can go, but we have had a number of initial conversations with other regional stakeholders, and we're pretty excited about the prospect. And we, and I would also note, we see other regions across the country really taking seriously housing affordability at the regional scale. So, there's some very interesting models out there in Boston and Bay Area. So there's some very interesting models out there in Boston and Bay Area and others that are thinking about how to do that, that we're taking very seriously.
Other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
To be continued.
Okay, then we will start our review session agenda for the City Planning Commission Monday, December 2, 2019. The time is 1:33, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit in Queens Community District 2. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
If you feel comfortable, you can start with that.
Sure. While the, good afternoon, commissioners. There we go. The applicant, Home Depot USA, requests a special permit to facilitate the construction of a six-story self-service storage facility at 5902 Borden Avenue as a component of a larger as-of-right retail development in the Masbeth neighborhood in Community District 2. The project area is a designated area within M-1-1 district per Appendix J of the ZR, predominantly characterized by one- and two-story industrial and commercial buildings, low-density residential uses located to the east. Industrial uses include several transportation, distribution, supply, automotive-related uses, and several construction-related businesses. Several restaurants, retail, and wholesale businesses, and one hotel is located in the surrounding area. The map above indicates the quarter-mile radius, indicating that there are no self-service storage facilities in the area. Directly across the street of the development site is the elevated portion of Midtown Expressway. The project area is served by local bus routes along 58th Street and Maurice Avenue, but the nearest subway station at 52nd Street, seven-line station is located over a mile to the north. Project area encompasses approximately 315,000 square feet. It's generally bound by Borden Avenue to the north, Maurice Avenue to the east, 55th Drive to the south, and 58th Street to the west. Lot 40 is currently vacant, was previously occupied by Coca-Cola Distribution Facility. Shown in the aerial map above, I'd like to point out that the map above is outdated, has since been demolished, and the as-of-right component of the project described later has made significant progress already. Existing slides above here showing development site facing southeast from Borden Avenue. See the construction fence bordering the site. View of Borden Avenue facing southeast, development site to the right, the Midtown Expressway to the left. View of the project area facing southwest from Borden Avenue, looking into development site, Home Depot. This photo already is pretty obsolete. There's this shell of the Home Depot that's being proposed, is essentially complete. On the photo on the right, view of Maurice Avenue facing southwest, the project area at the right. View of the project area facing northeast from 55th Drive. Top photo on the left. On the right, view of 55th Drive facing west from Maurice Avenue. Project area is to the right. Actions requested, the applicant is requesting special permit pursuant to Section 74932 to facilitate the development of a self-storage facility in the designated area. Per the ZR, to grant such a special permit, the City Planning Commission shall find that the site is appropriate for such use based on the land use characteristics of the proposed site and the surrounding area. Among the considerations that the applicant has identified as applicable to permit this facility include the distance of the project area from the nearest subway station for potential employees, the increase in distribution and warehouse facilities in the surrounding area demonstrating lessening demand for traditional job-creating industrial uses, and Home Depot's expectation that this self-storage will not only be used by local residents, but will serve local contractors to store tools and construction supplies, and for small businesses to keep inventory. The view of the self-storage is complementary to the Home Depot with significant overlap between the targeted market. In terms of proposed development, Home Depot is proposing the construction of a 136 gross square foot, six-story self-storage facility. In the image to the right, the development that's subject to the special permit is highlighted in the orange dotted line. It includes four loading berths and three accessory parking spaces. Again, this is part of a larger as-of-right retail development anchored by a Home Depot and two other retail buildings. The as-of-right Home Depot would be 134,000 square feet, and an 8,000 and 12,000, approximately 8,000, 12,000 gross square feet for the other retail buildings, with 517 accessory parking spaces, again, as of right, and currently under construction. The building would be set back approximately 20 feet from Borden Avenue, would rise to a maximum building height of approximately 64 feet. The main vehicular and loading entrance would be on Borden Avenue. Looking at ground floor plans, three accessory parking spaces, again, access from Borden Avenue, and four loading berths would be available. Access fronting Home Depot is also included in the dotted line, is showing access towards the Home Depot. The anticipation is that you'll get your goods at Home Depot, move along to the self-storage facility adjacent to the property. Here are sections showing the six-story building, again, complying with zoning regulations, bulk regulations. Elevations maxing out to 64 feet. For lesser purposes only, above is a rendering of the property. Again, the development subject to the special permit to the right, six-story self-service storage center, the Home Depot with parking above the roof, and the two as-of-right retail buildings to the left. In conclusion, six-story self-storage facility anchored by Home Depot, just the self-storage is subject to the special permit. Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Scott. I just had one question of clarification. This is an M-1 district, right?
Yes, sir.
And not the self-storage, but the Home Depot itself is 134,000 square feet.
The Home Depot is 134,000, and then the two sort of retail islands, one's approximately 8,000, the other 12,000.
Right, so why is this not a special permit requirement because it's more than 10,000 square feet? Just clarify that for me.
So the special permit is just for self-storage in a designated area, which is essentially terminus with IBZ districts. The Home Depot retail conforms as an as-of-right use in an M-1 district retail.
And a Home Depot is?
Yeah. Home Depot is a...
Use group six.
Yeah, it's a use group, but I believe that they actually file as a hardware store, which is permitted at unlimited, and I think they have their own special. Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Yes, Scott, one of the considerations that the commission is supposed to have in looking at these is allows the possibility of consulting with the Department of Small Business Services. I'm wondering if that consultation has happened, and the extent to which this self-storage facility aligns with whatever other work is going on in the IBZ. Has SBS been consulted, or has the Masbeth Industrial Business Association been involved in planning for this?
Certainly is a consideration. I don't believe they have engaged Small Business Services. They were pretty far along in their proposal. They were intent on building this Home Depot. They see it as creating a significant amount of jobs in the area, but I could have them follow up with some certainty to that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I mean, even if they don't follow up, I think it's something that we would like to know, that this aligns well with the city's priorities for this area.
Other questions? Okay, then the application is certified.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda, page 26, is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments, UDAP designation, disposition of city-owned property, and acquisition in Community District 16 in Brooklyn. Our presenter is Anthony Grande.
Okay. Good afternoon. There we go. This is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services for land use actions to facilitate the development of a new 100% affordable eight-story, approximately 98,000 square-foot mixed-use building containing 107 affordable units at 1510 Broadway in the Ocean Hill neighborhood of Brooklyn. The project area is located in the Ocean Hill neighborhood of Brooklyn at the northern corner of Community District 16, right at the border of Districts 3 and 4. The proposed project area is one full tax block, which is a roughly triangular block with frontage on Broadway, Hancock Street, Saratoga Avenue, and Jefferson Avenue, with a total of approximately 25,000 square feet. The development site outlined in blue on the map is a city-owned vacant lots with frontage on all four streets with approximately 21,000 square feet. The surrounding area is primarily residential with a variety of densities and build forms with commercial retail uses concentrated primarily along Broadway. The project area is within an existing R6 district extending generally to the north and to the east. Across the street to the west is an R6B district, which is a contextual residential district mapped in the 2007 Bed-Stuy South rezoning. R6 districts are medium-density districts that allow residential and community facility uses. Under the height factor option, residential development has a maximum FAR of 2.43 with no fixed height limit. Under the quality housing option, residential developments on a narrow street have a maximum FAR of 2.2 with a contextual building envelope limiting base height to four stories and total building height to five stories. On wide streets, the maximum FAR for residential uses is 3.0 with height limited to seven stories, and community facility uses are allowed to a maximum FAR of 4.8. The area's longest frontage is on Broadway, which is an 80-foot-wide street and a major transit and retail corridor in the area, serving as the boundary between the Bushwick neighborhood to the north and the Bedford-Stuyvesant and Ocean Hill neighborhoods to the south. Here we can see in the aerial, the majority of the block is the vacant portion, which is city-owned, which is also the proposed development site. The remainder of the block is a privately-owned lot on the southwest corner, which contains a two-story warehouse building. Directly to the south is the New York City Housing Authority Saratoga Square Development, which is a 16-story tower, which is also set back from Hancock Street by about 35 feet. The area is well-served by transit. The Halsey Street J&amp;Z Station is directly in front of the project area, with the station entrance just one block to the south along Broadway. This is a view of the project area from Jefferson Avenue. The elevated rail infrastructure running along Broadway can be seen on the left. And this is a photo of the Broadway frontage, again, with the elevated infrastructure and the development site to the right. We can see the stairway coming down from the platform here, but this is a closed stairway. This is the corner of Broadway and Hancock with the project area directly in the center of the photo, and we can also see the two-story warehouse building just in the center there. To the left, we can see the Saratoga Square Nitro Building, which is the 16-story tower set back from the street. The proposed development would be a new eight-story, approximately 98,000-square-foot mixed-use building with approximately 10,000 square feet of ground-floor retail space and a total of 107 affordable units with one superintendent's unit. The building would have a total FAR of approximately 4.59. Along the Broadway frontage, the building would set back after the ground floor to provide a separation between the residential units and the elevated rail infrastructure. The setback would also create an approximately 7,000-square-foot outdoor courtyard space as an amenity for building residents on the roof of the first floor. This is a view of the proposed development from the Saratoga Avenue frontage. The ground floor of the proposed building would have approximately 10,000 square feet of retail space with frontage on Broadway and a commercial loading dock on the Hancock frontage. The remainder of the ground floor would be residential floor area, including lobby and accessory space, and six units on the ground floor with their frontages on Saratoga and Hancock. There's an approximately 13 by 13-foot square space along the Broadway frontage, just in the upper-right portion of the building on this view, which is to be used as a future MTA elevator to access the adjacent platform for the Halsey Street Station on the JZ line. This portion of the building would be sealed off and publicly inaccessible until such time that an elevator could be constructed. The proposed building, being 100% affordable and within the transit zone, would provide no off-street parking spaces. In order to facilitate the proposed developments, the applicant's request four actions. Zoning map and text amendments, the UDAP with disposition, and the acquisition of property by the city, and I'll just go through each of those quickly here. First, the zoning map amendment. The project area is proposed to be changed from an R6 C13 district to an R71 C24 district. R71 districts are medium-density residential districts that allow residential uses to a maximum FAR of 4.6 for MIH buildings, and community facility uses to a maximum FAR of 4.8. Quality housing buildings are allowed a maximum base height of 75 feet and a maximum total height of 135 feet, or 13 stories. Parking is required for 50% of market rate units, but no parking is required for affordable units in the transit zone. And the C24 district allows a range of retail and service uses limited to the ground floor of mixed-use buildings and limited to 2 FAR. Second, the applicant seeks a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area over the project area, mapping options 1 and 2. And finally, HPD proposes an urban development action area designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property, which would apply to the entirety of the proposed development site, which is outlined in blue on the site plan here. And DCAST proposes an acquisition of property by the city, which would affect an approximately 13 by 13-square-foot portion of the proposed development site, which is the red box. This area would be reacquired by the city after construction of the building for the purpose of leasing to the MTA for a future elevator site. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. So I know it's very early, but I wondered if they had any idea what kind of tenant they were looking for, only because I see that it's a very deep space, it's a very big space, and the, you know, rest of the retail on that street is really quite weak. And so, you know, it's something that should be considered at the outset when you think about design, even at this early stage.
Yeah, I believe the development team that's working with HPD on this project, they're actually working with a retailer that would be dedicated to this space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I presume that because HPD is involved, that they'll be referring to the design guidelines for retail that HPD uses?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. I think the resident recreational roof is a nice amenity. It seems very close to the L. I was just wondering what the distance was, and I know this is quality housing, so it's built to the lot line. I guess it may be unavoidable. I was just wondering what the dimension is.
Yeah, that's correct. I'm not sure, so obviously, it's kind of a, the dimension varies. I'm not sure -- so obviously, it's kind of a -- the dimension varies along the width of the frontage there. But the sidewalk itself is about 19 feet in width, and the infrastructure, it comes over the sidewalk a little bit, so you have maybe 15 feet of separation between the building and the train itself. And they're showing in here, the illustrative view, they're showing some fencing as a barrier. I think the developers should probably look into how they want to provide that kind of sound barrier as well.
Yeah.
But this does provide a setback for the residential units, which helps give a little bit more space for the noise.
Right. Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Levin.
Anthony, if they're working with HPD on this, I wonder, is there a proposed unit mix and a proposed affordability program here?
HPD provided a unit mix. So the mix of units would be mostly -- actually, so it's about an even split between the twos and threes, which is about half the building. And then the other half would be one-bedrooms and studios, with studios only being a small number of units. I think we can provide the numbers for you.
Okay, so that's good. So it's skewed toward larger units?
Primarily, yes.
Okay, good. And affordability? It looks like they're wanting to map both 1 and 2. Are they working with HPD on 1 or the other, I hope?
I'm not sure about which MIH option would be chosen, which would affect the permanent affordable units. But for the building overall, I know the range of AMIs is between 30 and 80%, so the building itself will land in that range.
Okay. So perhaps when that comes back for public hearing, we can get more detail on these things.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. Another thing to keep in mind that I don't know if they're thinking about, I recently talked to someone from UPS who mentioned the challenges associated with delivering packages for folks who are ordering online, of all-income ranges people are ordering online. And in lower-income neighborhoods, it's very difficult to deliver the package, and they end up having to deliver, or temp-delivery, three, four times in diesel trucks, so air quality becomes an issue. I don't see any package room, I don't see any place to put packages, and I imagine that's something that is going to be important. And it's just something to flag now for the developer and for HPD also to be thinking about in the future.
I think HPD can address that.
It's a good flag, because it's hard enough in existing buildings, but in new buildings, there is the opportunity to plan for that. Commissioner Bernie.
Just a couple of quick things on the exterior design. I'm not sure what they have in mind with the facade, but I would just caution them about these colors. I mean, these colors go out of fashion very quickly, and maybe something more neutral would be appropriate. It looks like some sort of cement board, or I'm not quite sure, but if they can address that. And the second thing is, I notice they have residential at the street level, and this is a perennial problem of how do you screen it from passersby? And it looks from the slide, one of the earlier slides, that they were putting planting in front. And as I've mentioned before, that's always problematic, nobody maintains it. And I just wonder, I don't quite know what the solution is, but I think that needs to be thought about. When you get to that level of detail, when HPD is working with them, they need to figure out how to solve that problem, I think.
Yeah, and I think having that little bit of setback at least does provide the opportunity for the plantings. Of course, the maintenance is an issue, but I think the applicant and the developer can address that.
I mean, I think it works better when you've got a management company who's actually maintaining the place, and they've got people there to look after the planting and water it. But if not, then they quickly start looking manky, to coin the phrase.
Now, this is -- could you go back, Anthony, to the one that shows the ground floor?
Hancock and Saratoga.
The ground floor.
Right, that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, if you go back to the plan.
Yeah.
You can see --
Oh, where's the -- here we go.
Yeah, on Saratoga and Hancock, they seem to have little plantar things in front.
We'll ask HPD to address it when it comes back for the public hearing. Other questions? Commissioner Marine.
Just have a general curiosity question. Anthony, can you tell us what that building is that forms the balance of the triangle at the bottom of the page?
Yes, I can say what I know about it, which is that it's a two-story building. It is -- the CFO for the building is for a warehouse, so it looks like a warehouse. The last time that I walked by this building on the Saratoga frontage, just right along here, there was an awning that had a "House of Worship" sign on it, so that may be what the second floor is being used as, but that was a brand-new thing, and I've walked by this site quite a few times. So it may be half warehouse, half House of Worship.
Thank you. Very interesting.
Other comments or questions? Okay, so this application is certified.
The third item on the agenda, page 55, is a certification of a special permit in Manhattan, Community District 3. Our presenter is Matthew Pietrus.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I think we are at 3 St. Marks.
Did we have the wrong one up on the screen?
Oh. Yep. We need item 3, 3 St. Marks.
Great. While that's coming up, so this is a private application coming to you for certification by REEC St. Marks LP, and the application is for a zoning special permit pursuant to Section 7479. The special permit would allow two things to happen. First, it would allow the transfer of unused floor area from an adjacent landmark to the development site. Second, it would allow for the modification to heightened setback regulations to accommodate this additional bulk. The project is in Manhattan, Community District 3. This is the proposed development. The project is located on 3rd Avenue and St. Marks Place in the East Village. 3rd Avenue generally acts as a boundary between the higher-density, taller buildings along the corridor and the NoHo and Astor Place neighborhoods to the south and west. Buildings in these neighborhoods are as tall as 20 stories. The areas to the east of 3rd Avenue are generally low-rise walk-ups along the midblocks, with slightly taller buildings with ground-floor retail along the corridors. Buildings generally range in height between 3 and 6 stories. I'll point out here that the zoning district boundary between the commercial and residential districts is 100 feet east of 3rd Avenue, which is where we see the change in building typology and use. This image shows 3rd Avenue at the center of your screen and highlights the boundary between the mixed use and bulk of the buildings along 3rd Avenue and the neighborhood to the west. The lower-density residential East Village neighborhood is to the east. The development site is shown in red in the center of the screen, and the landmark site is shown in blue. These two sites comprise the project area and are at the convergence of these two neighborhoods with different uses and built forms. Zooming in, we see the project area. The development site is comprised of three tax lots, and the landmark is across the street. The development site is located on the corner of 3rd Avenue and St. Marks Place, directly across from 51 Astor Place, which is an office building that was recently constructed in 2012. Directly north and adjacent to development site is a dormitory for the Cooper Union, and east of the development site is a five-story walk-up with ground-floor retail. The landmark site is located at 4 St. Marks Place and is directly east of the St. Marks On the left of your screen is an image of the development site. It was previously -- it previously contained three buildings, which were demolished in the summer of this year. It is now vacant. On the right is the landmark site, which is also known as the Hamilton Holly House. It rises 3 and 1/2 stories. The half-story is an attic behind the two dormers at the top of the building. It was built in 1831, and was occupied by Alexander Hamilton's son and his son's family. And since 1969, the building has housed retail uses on the lower floors with three dwelling units above. It was designated as an individual landmark in 2004. The landmark is currently underbuilt and contains about 8,600 square feet of unused floor area, most of which would transfer to the development site as part of this application. The proposed development is a new 10-story office building with ground-floor retail. The building would have four setbacks, one each at the 4th, 7th, 9th, and 10th floors. And where the building sets back, the applicant is proposing open space for building tenants. Because it is located within a C61 district, the permitted as-of-right FAR is 6. However, as a condition of the 7479 special permit, bulk can increase by 20% to an FAR of 7.2, which is the proposed FAR of the building. In order to construct the building, the applicant is seeking a special permit to first allow for the transfer of floor area from the landmark, and second, to modify heightened setback regulations in order to accommodate this additional floor area. The first part of the 7479 special permit is to allow for the transfer of unused floor area from a landmark. If this special permit were granted, the landmark site would be restored to a sound, first-class condition. And as part of the project, there would also be a continuing maintenance plan that binds the owner and future owners of the landmark to maintain it. The restoration work and continuing maintenance plan have already been approved by the LPC. The second part of the special permit allows the Commission to permit bulk modifications to accommodate the additional floor area and ensure that these modifications are compatible with the landmark. In this district, the maximum permitted front wall height is 85 feet. As shown in the sections on the left of the screen, the front wall height for both the 3rd Avenue and St. Marks frontages is about 63 feet, a little more than 20 feet shorter than what is allowed. This reduction in front wall height is meant to match the existing built character along St. Marks, including the height of the landmark, which is about 64 feet. The required setback changes slightly depending on whether a building fronts on a wide or a narrow street. 3rd Avenue is considered a wide street, and the building setbacks here comply with the underlying zoning regulations. St. Marks Place, however, is a narrow street, and on this frontage, the applicant seeks setback waivers, which are shown in red and in the image to the right. First, at 85 feet, buildings are required to set back 20 feet and then follow the sky-exposure plane. On St. Marks, the building sets back nine feet at 63 feet, but then rises to 108 feet. At 108 feet or the 7th floor, the building sets back 15 feet and rises to 139 feet. At 139 feet or the 9th floor, the building sets back 28 feet, which is then within the sky-exposure plane and compliant. In short, the applicants are seeking a bulk waiver for heightened required setback from the middle of the 6th floor to the 9th floor at a depth of 20 feet. This slide shows the neighborhood character on St. Marks Place. The image on the bottom is the south elevation, which includes the landmark site in blue. The image on the top is the north elevation, which includes the development site in red. The red line across both elevations is the height of the first setback of the proposed development, which was designed below the maximum allowable base height of 85 feet to create a continuous street wall. As part of this application, I will also note that LPC does opine on whether the proposed building is harmonious with the landmark and the surrounding area, and some changes to the building's design did result from comments during their review. With that, the applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 7479 to transfer unused floor area from an adjacent landmark and to modify heightened setback regulations to accommodate that area. Happy to take any questions.
Questions from the Commission. Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
The fourth item on the agenda, page 92, is a non-U-Lerp referral of minor modifications to previously-approved special permits and a restrictive declaration in Manhattan, Community District 5. Our presenter is Allison Brown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. OAC 550 Owner LLC requests a modification to a special permit and the restrictive declaration associated with the previously-granted special permit to reconfigure covered pedestrian space located at 550 Madison Avenue in Community District 5. And here we see a rendering of the proposed condition. So the project site, 550 Madison Avenue, is bounded by East 55th Street, Madison Avenue, and East 56th Street, shown in the red outline. It is located in the East Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District 5, within one of New York's central business districts. The surrounding area is a high-density commercial district, which features large office towers and ground-floor retail. The project site is within the northern subarea of the special Midtown District's East Midtown Subdistrict. The surrounding area consists of a C5-2.5 and C5-3 zoning districts, which are a 12 and 15 FAR respectively. 550 Madison Avenue is itself a landmark. Nearby individual landmarks include the St. Regis Hotel, Lever House, and the Gotham Hotel. Central Park, which is three blocks northwest of the project site, is the only major public open space in the surrounding area. There are, though, several privately-owned public spaces, or POPs, within the 600-foot radius of the site, including 590 Madison Avenue, 250 and 535 Madison Avenue across the street, 712 Fifth Avenue to the west, 432 Park Avenue, and 450 Park Avenue to the northeast. The area is well-served by public transit, with subway stations for the E, M, F, N, R, and W trains all nearby, and bus service and city bike stations are also nearby and In 1978, AT&amp;T, the then-owner of 550 Madison Avenue, was granted special permits to allow modifications of then-applicable heightened setback regulations and to permit a floor-area bonus at a ratio of 14 to 1 for an approximately 6,000-square-foot covered pedestrian space. The design of the building included a 14,000-square-feet of arcades and 11,000-square-foot science museum or exhibition space, which was housed within a four-story annex, a secondary structure on the western edge of the zoning lot. In 1984, ownership was granted an additional special permit for a reduction in the size of the previously-approved covered pedestrian space and arcades in order to increase the amount of ground-floor retail. In connection with this action, ownership executed and recorded a restrictive declaration specifying operating hours for the covered pedestrian space and requiring the built form and operations of the covered pedestrian space, annex, and arcades to be in accordance with the plans approved by the Commission. From 1992 to 2011, ownership of the building changed hands, and a series of modifications to the special permit and restrictive declaration were made, resulting in a series of changes to the design of the site. Most notably, modifications allowed further reduction in the size of arcades to just 3,500 square feet in order to provide ground-floor retail spaces fronting onto Madison Avenue and the full enclosure of the covered pedestrian space. There were also modifications to the restrictive declaration at the same time, modifying the hours of operation of the exhibit space, housed inside the annex, and the hours of operation of the covered pedestrian space. Sorry, just a little bit more Sony occupied the building as its headquarters from 1990 until 2015. The building has been vacant since 2018 and is currently undergoing interior alterations to become a modern Class A office space. LPC designated the building as a landmark in 2018 and granted approval for the proposed modifications in early 2019. So here we see the ground floor of the building as it exists today. 550 Madison has a lot area of 3,700 square feet and occupies the eastern portion of a midtown block, which is bounded by Madison Avenue to the east, East 55th Street to the south, and East 56th Street to the north. And here we see the breakdown of the different types of spaces on the site. The 37-story office tower holds ground-floor retail. It is flanked by two arcade spaces on East 55th Street and East 56th Street, shown in blue. And shown in yellow is the covered pedestrian space, or CPS. To the western edge of the site is the annex, which is a four-story structure, which includes back-of-house spaces, retail spaces fronting onto the CPS, public restrooms, and the exhibit space, which most recently operated as the Sony Wonder Technology Lab. The CPS is currently configured as a 10,000-square-foot space with a 39-foot-wide portion between the annex and the building, and a 31-foot-wide portion, actually underneath the tower of the building on either side of the elevator bank. And here are a few views of the existing building. So here's the view from East 55th Street looking north. We see the four-story annex with the entrances to off-street loading facilities, the covered pedestrian space, and the existing arcades below the office tower. Here's the view from East 55th Street looking north. We can see more of those Madison Avenue retail frontages, as well as the iconic entrance to the building. The view from East 56th Street looking south, corner of East 56th and Madison. And here's the view from East 56th looking south, the mirror image of East 55th with the annex on the right with the entrances to off-street parking facility, the covered pedestrian space, and again, the R pedestrian space, and again, the arcade as it exists today below the office tower. And here's a view of the inside of the covered pedestrian space. We can see that it's fully enclosed. This is the office tower, and these entrances here provide access to another portion of the covered pedestrian space, and here's the annex. So again, existing conditions. And here is the proposed conditions. So the applicant proposes infilling the existing arcades, consisting of 3,542 square feet, by extending adjacent ground-floor retail uses along 55th Street and 56th Streets. So here were the previous locations of the arcades. The covered pedestrian space will be modified in configuration and design and will no longer be enclosed. Areas that no longer qualify as covered pedestrian space or arcade will become public access area, or PAA. A more illustrative view of the same plan. We can see the covered pedestrian space will continue to comply with the applicable standards under the 1978 and 1984 special permit. The applicant proposes to enhance the ground floor of the building and public space by removing the enclosures of the covered pedestrian space and providing new landscaping, seating, and other amenities in the covered pedestrian space, such as a water feature and three kiosks labeled here. The annex is proposed to shrink in size from four stories to one and provide a green roof, which will serve as a backdrop to the covered pedestrian space. The annex will hold a public restroom and entrances to below-ground parking and loading facilities accessed from East 56th Street and East 55th Street respectively. And now I'll run through a few renderings of the envisioned future of the site. Again, starting on East 55th Street looking north, we see the annex, which is now only one story in height with that proposed green roof, the modified cover of the covered pedestrian space, which is now open to the air, not enclosed. The arcade, oh, sorry, the arcade infilled with new extended retail. Again, the view from East 56th Street looking south. Here's a view from East 55th Street and the corner of Madison Avenue. We can see more, a better view of the retail being proposed in the existing arcade. And the same view at night. The covered pedestrian space will be open to the public between the hours of 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM each day. As such, a lighting plan has been proposed to ensure the covered pedestrian space will be safe and comfortable to pedestrians in the evening hours. As you can see here, the covered pedestrian space will be unenclosed, the covered pedestrian space will still be covered, but then the public access area, which is the area above the annex, will actually be open to the sky. There's no glass being proposed here so that the planting and the green roof can access adequate rainwater. A view within the covered pedestrian space. Here is one of three kiosks being proposed, and around the corner here is the entrance into the annex where one could access the public bathrooms. And this is underneath, the portion of the covered pedestrian space is underneath the tower. We can see that same kiosk and a second kiosk, the third being on the other side, on the other side of the elevator bank. The proposed water feature, as previously mentioned, is this element here. And just to show a variety of seating options and numerous planting being provided. Okay. So in order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicant requests a modification to a special permit and the restrictive declaration associated with the previously granted special permit to reconfigure the covered pedestrian space. In order to grant such actions, the commission shall find that the proposed design is in keeping with the findings and conditions of the previous special permit. Included in the commission's briefing package is the applicant's discussion of conditions, where the applicant provides their rationale. In addition to these actions, the owner is also seeking a chairperson certification for elimination of non-bonus open area on the zoning lot containing a bonus amenity, in this instance, for the elimination of the arcade area located on East 55th Street and East 56th Street. As a modification, this application will refer to Community Board Five for up to 45 days. Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you. So with the closing of the arcades, what's the comparison between the original size of the POPs and what will be now? Is it less?
So the arcades consist of 3,500 square feet approximately, and that will be entirely filled in.
So my question was, the final public space, what's the area of the final public space compared to the original public space?
With the elimination of the arcades, it'll be less public space.
Just a net loss of 3,000, that's it. Okay. And the garden--
One thing, though, that I would note on that is that that was non-bonus public space, so the bonus public space is remaining the same.
It was non-bonus public space?
Right.
No, I believe the arcade did receive a bonus.
Oh, it did?
Yes.
And I was trying to figure out how you get to the green roof on top of the annex. Is that accessible or not accessible?
It is not accessible for pedestrians to walk on the green roof. It's, yeah.
That would be a way--
Viewable.
Compensate for the loss of the 3,000-square-foot of arcades, though, wouldn't it?
I mean, that area is not currently a bonus space. It's not currently accessible at all. It's a four-story structure, so it hasn't ever achieved a bonus, and it's not proposed to.
No, I'm just suggesting that if we're losing 3,000, we could get it back by giving access to the garden up there, which is a, I don't know if they would consider that, but it might be a way to--
I can discuss it with the applicant if that is feasible.
Thank you.
I think comparatively speaking, this is a lot more open, obviously, than the other configuration, but do you know what signage is going to look like? I mean, in terms of alerting the public that this is, in fact, publicly accessible space?
Oh, yes, there'll be the same public signage that we see in all of our POPs entry plaques that will state the hours of operations, list the amenities that will be provided, and make it clear that it's a three-block connection.
Speaking of the hours of operation, what are they?
7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, which is part of the previous special permit and restrictive declaration. So those hours of operation will remain the same.
Okay, just one small comment. Let them just check back the detail on Z119, because they have 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM on the detail for the signage, so just to bring that--
Important typo. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. I'm sorry, I'm really trying to understand sort of how this reduction, you know, where the arcade falls and how it's been reduced over time. I mean, I understand the timeline, but it's unclear to me whether these arcades, whether they got the bonus originally in part because they were offering up these fairly robust arcades. That's how I read it, and it seems like you just clarified that for us. But, you know, there's been such a significant reduction since 1978 till now.
Yes.
And, you know, they've received 110,000 square feet of FAR, which they've been capitalizing now since 1978, but our public sector space has shrunk significantly, and now there's another 3,500 square feet of space that they will be able to capitalize again, and we're not really, I don't see there being much that we're getting as a result.
So just to clarify, you can see on the drawing that we can get you the numbers to confirm the exact figures for this, but the CPS is maintaining the same amount of space, and the PAA is actually increasing in size. So the size, there's not a reduction in the size of space for the CPS and the PAA combined, but we can get those numbers for you, exact numbers for when we come back.
And you are correct that previously, the arcade was even larger than shown here under the original 1978 plan, and over time, it's been reduced with a series of modifications.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. I'm confused between this bonus versus unbonused, because the language seems to suggest that they got bonus floor area generated by both the CPS and arcades. And so, you know, whether it's bonus or unbonus, it doesn't seem like it matters that they benefited from offering both of those. It's just not clear to me.
Okay, we'll come back with a comparison of each of the spaces. I will note, having remembered when the building was originally built, the notion was that that four-story annex was going to be a science museum or an exhibit space of some kind, and it was a flop. It never took hold. It was closed more than it was open.
The older, hit or no?
We looked at--
The dark.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Edie. I don't think you're old enough to have remembered when the building was first constructed.
I do very well, and I do remember, like, the arcade spaces themselves were not as inviting as and helpful to the street frontage as people would want them to be.
We don't, and unfortunately, I don't have a view of looking down the arcade, but I will note it's quite narrow compared to most arcades we see in the city and fairly dark.
But we can get a photo for that. We have them in our--
Fifth Avenue Arcade, I mean, the Madison Avenue.
But we'll get a comparison of the three areas so that we can track it from where it was, and I think most significantly for the commission now, where it is today and what is being asked of us. Other comments? Okay, well, as Allison mentioned, we will refer this to the community board for 45 days.
The fifth item on the agenda, page 143, is a referral, non-ULP referral of authorizations in Manhattan Community District One, and Allison Brown will present.
Okay, good afternoon. GFP Real Estate LLC seeks an authorization to permit a horizontal enlargement of an existing arcade and three-block arcade and to modify certain public space requirements at 100 Pearl Street, formerly 7 Hanover Square, in Lower Manhattan, Community District One. The applicant seeks, from the commission, two authorizations. An authorization to permit a horizontal enlargement in an existing arcade identified in Area B of the Water Street Subdistrict Appendix map, and an authorization to modify certain design provisions of indoor public space in relation to grade changes, kiosks, and signage. In addition, the applicant is seeking two chairperson certifications, a certification to permit a horizontal enlargement of existing arcade and three-block arcade within Area A of the appendix map, and to permit cafes in the indoor public space. So 100 Pearl Street, shown in the red outline, is bounded by Water Street to the east, Hanover Square to the north, and Pearl Street to the west. The surrounding area is mapped within a C5-5 zoning district within the Water Street Subdistrict of the special Lower Manhattan District. The South Street Seaport Subdistrict of the special Lower Manhattan District is located immediately across the street from the project area and to the northeast. The surrounding area features several historic districts and individual landmarks. The Stone Street Historic District is located northwest of the project area, and the Francis Tavern Block Historic District is located to the southwest. Across Pearl Street are individual landmarks, including India House. The surrounding area is well-served by public transportation. So in 2016, the Water Street Text Amendment created new mechanisms to allow for enlargements within existing arcades in the Water Street Subdistrict. The goals of the Text Amendment were to improve the pedestrian experience, provide useful services and amenities for nearby residents and employees, improve the quality of public spaces, and improve flood resilience of each building. In addition to, sorry, in addition to infill, developers must provide a compensating amenity, typically an improvement to an existing public space on or adjacent to the same zoning lot, and all horizontal enlargements must be flood-protected. 100 Pearl Street, formerly 7 Hanover Square, which is identified as Site 12 of the Water Street Text Amendment map, can achieve an enlargement through a combination of chairperson certification for areas shown in gray, shown in gray in the diagram on the right, and a CPC authorization for areas shown in the hatch pattern. In this instance, the compensating amenity will be the creation of an indoor public So here we see the existing conditions of the ground floor of the building. The building was built in 1983 with a special permit which allowed for relief of heightened setback, as well as transfer of development rights from India House, the landmark across the street. The site was built with an arcade and a through-block arcade, as noted here, as well as office lobby and retail spaces. 100 Pearl Street is approximately 35,000 square-feet lot, improved with a 26-story office tower, and consisting of approximately 717 square-feet of floor area, or a 20 FAR. The building rises to a height of 394 feet without setback. On Pearl Street, building frontages include retail, a loading berth, and the western entrance to the through-block arcade. Hanover Square and Water Street frontages include the arcade and the eastern entrance to the through-block arcade. Here we see some images of the L-shaped arcade. It's 5,300 square feet, lined with a few retail spaces and absent of any public amenities as required as part of the zoning. And here are some images of the existing through-block arcade, which is 7,500 square feet and connects Water Street to Pearl Street. It is lined with several retail spaces and holds a few public amenities, such as benches and planters. Okay, so again, here we see the ground floor as it exists today, and here we see the proposed So this is the ground floor as it exists today, with the proposed indoor public space shown in yellow, increased retail and lobby area. The proposed enlargement is approximately 7,000 square feet, located within what is now the building's arcade, three-block arcade, and certain ground force spaces that did not generate a floor area bonus. The through-block arcade will remain but be reconfigured as an indoor public space, which is shown in yellow, so it'll become an enclosed 6,300-square-foot space. It will continue to comply with the height, width, and other requirements of through-block arcades and continue to provide a passageway, a public passageway between Water Street and Pearl Street. The proposed layout allows office lobby access from all streets and from the indoor public space. Retail will be provided along street frontages and also along the indoor public space. So here we see a close-up look of the layout of the indoor public space. The indoor public space will be lined with several small retail establishments to provide a market hall feel. In this plan, there are 11 individual retailers proposed. There will be a direct visual connection from Pearl Street to Water Street and a meandering pedestrian circulation path between the public amenities. Public amenities include movable tables and shears, fixed benches, litter receptacles, drinking fountains, public space signage, planting, both with in planters and benches, and vertical planting along building columns. A bathroom open to the public will also be accessible through the indoor public space through doors located here. Sorry. So the bathroom is not within the bounds of the indoor public space, but through these doors, there'll be access to a public bathroom. Here we see envisioned future of the site, as seen from Hanover Square. As Water Street is susceptible to future flooding events, the proposed enlargement will ensure the building is protected. As such, the ground floor will be dry-floodproofed. Building entrances, loading berths, and the parking garage entrance will be protected using temporary flood-control devices. Other portions of the ground floor will have a concrete curb poured to the level of the design flood elevation or utilize marine glass panels. This approach will ensure that the ground floor of the building is substantially impermeable to water while maintaining a high level of transparency for the proposed enlargement. Separate from this application, ownership is also moving mechanical equipment from the basement to the second floor for resiliency purposes. the basement to the second floor for resiliency purposes. Here we see a closed-up view of the entrance to the indoor public space. We can see that the walls will be treated with a high percentage of transparent materials, making the indoor public space viewable from the outside. In addition, there will be public signage, POP signage, which will be provided at each entrance, indicating the space is open to the public, that the space provides a through-block connection, and that the space is open from 6:00 AM to midnight. Here we see a rendering of the inside of the indoor public space. You can see several public amenities such as planting, public seating in the form of both benches and movable tables and chairs. And here is another view where we can see the envisioned multiple small retailers fronting onto the space. Okay, so I will now go through the requested actions and the conditions of these actions. First, an authorization is needed to permit the horizontal enlargement within the 933 square foot area shown in the red dash line here, also within the hatch area shown on the appendix map. In order to grant an authorization, the commission shall find that all ground floor requirements are met, a compensating amenity is provided, a sufficient unobstructed space exists adjacent to the proposed enlargement to facilitate pedestrian circulation, and the enlargement will maintain a visual or physical connection to Water Street from another street, public park, or publicly accessible open area. In the commission's briefing package is a discussion of conditions where the applicant provides explanation to all of these conditions. Secondly, the applicant seeks an authorization to modify certain design requirements of the indoor public space, specifically with respect to kiosks, grade of the indoor public space, and accessory signage. First, only one 100-square-foot kiosk is permitted for every 5,000-square-feet of indoor public space. Therefore, only one kiosk will be permitted in this indoor public space, as it's 6,300 square feet. The applicant seeks an authorization to permit three kiosks in the indoor public space location shown in red, and this is just a typical kiosk plan. Second, the indoor public space is required to have a level at or within two feet above the average curve level of the nearest adjoining street. Due to the approximately two-feet-nine-inch grade change between Water Street and Pearl Street, it's not possible to comply with this requirement. An authorization is requested to accommodate this slight existing grade change, so the indoor public space will have an elevation of eight feet 10 inches on Water Street and an elevation of 11 feet 5 inches on Pearl Street. Indoor public space will gently slope between the two and be ADA compliant. And then finally, the applicant requests an authorization for accessory signage to ensure that small food service businesses are easily identifiable within the indoor public space. Accessory signage is limited to one non-illuminated sign of two square feet for up to a total of three signs. The authorization would allow one two-and-a-quarter-square-foot non-illuminated double-sided accessory blade signs, examples shown on the right, for each retail establishment with frontages on the indoor public space for up to a maximum of 16 signs. The two non-illuminated signs of seven square feet would be permitted for each kiosk for a maximum of six signs. In order to grant these authorizations to modify design requirements, the commission shall find that the usefulness and attractiveness of the indoor public space will be assured by the proposed layout and design, and that such modification will result in a superior urban design relationship with the surrounding streets, buildings, and public open areas. In the commission's briefing package is a discussion of conditions where the applicant provides an explanation to all of these conditions. As an authorization, this application will refer to the community board for 45 days before returning to the City Planning Commission.
In listening to the presentation, it struck me that a number of the commissioners, myself included, weren't here at the time that the Water Street text amendment was adopted. And my understanding is that this text amendment was adopted post-Sandy in recognition of a few things: one, the tremendous damage, the absence of resiliency of these buildings along Water Street, and also a recognition that the arcades, which were popular at the time that it was built, were not as lively as they could be. I happened to walk by 100 Pearl Street on a beautiful August sunny afternoon, and it is one of the most foreboding places that one could walk through. I would imagine today it's even more challenging. I don't know, Allison or Stephen, if there's more context that you would want to provide about the thinking that went into giving the commission the authority to authorize such changes.
I can note from the 2016 CPC report, it's noted that the arcades were originally envisioned and designed to provide this continuous covered pathway as really an amenity for pedestrians. However, they were often very dark, sometimes so deep that the retail fronting onto the arcade was too far set back from the street frontage and did not allow those retail spaces to be economically viable. They oftentimes dead-ended, which this one, in fact, does at the Pearl Street border. So they weren't really being effective as public amenity spaces.
And the text amendment set out actions that required commission action, actions that could be done by chair certification. It was quite detailed on a site-by-site basis. So questions from the commission? Commissioner Bernie?
I mean, the Water Street POPs have been a problem right from the start, and they were pre the new design guidelines, and none of them were well-designed. It's good to see, finally, people are starting to intervene and improve them. It was interesting to note that the AT&T building were going from an indoor space to an outdoor space, and now we're going from an outdoor space to an indoor space. I don't know how we feel about those two alternatives, but...
I mean, in this instance, there is a 27-story tower above, so it'd be hard to make it a truly outdoor space.
Right, right. It was sort of open to the elements before, so it's probably a benefit to begin with. But my only concern about it, about this one, about the design, is if you go to slide 12...
12?
Yeah. I just, well, actually, that one's fine. I just look at all of these 11 retailers, and to me, I get the impression now it has been more or less completely privatized. You go in there, you, the 11 retailers are dominating the space. If you, if you're just an office worker who wants to take his brown bag sandwich in there, I don't think you're going to feel comfortable. I think it seems like a private mall. It's like Italy or something. So that gives me caution. I'm not sure I'm happy about that.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, the intention is for it to be designed as a market hall with several individual retailers. All of the seating and benches and tables that are being shown in this plan are proposed to be public, publicly accessible amenities. There is a, you know, the required minimum width circulation path connecting Pearl Street and Water Street, and though it does meander around some of those public amenities, the benches and tables, there is a direct visual sightline from Water Street to Pearl Street, as well as signage indicating that the space is public. However, you know, how you perceive the space when you're actually in it can always, always differ from the plan view, so...
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any tables for public use. I see only restaurant tables, so...
Oh, no, these are all, so all of this, these are tables and chairs. This is kind of a long table, tables and chairs, tables and chairs. These are all public down here as well.
But you know how that works. The retailers basically, you know, co-opt them. They don't really become...
I mean, there'll be a restriction on, placed on the site to ensure that they remain public, so it would be enforceable through violation that if they are becoming privatized, if, you know, table service starts happening.
I guess the other question I would pose, it would be interesting if you saw design interventions that would contribute to the feeling that this was owned by the public. Commissioner Reedy?
Yeah, and also, I'm assuming the public spaces will be under the management of the building as opposed to the retailers. So the retailers won't be coming out into the public spaces for serving or anything, will they?
No, no, absolutely not.
So you'll be basically going up to retailer, bringing your food out into the space. I mean, there are other examples of that in New York City.
Yes, absolutely.
City Corp was one, Grand Central is another. So I, yeah, I think there might, you know, there should be some success here, and I don't think that should be a problem.
So, Richard, you and I are going to go once a month and have a brown bag lunch on those tables.
And then you're going to look at the signage, and it's going to tell you to call 311 if you see it being privatized. Commissioner Levin?
Yeah, I have to say, I share exactly this concern, and that was my reaction, looking at it. Is there a limitation in the zoning on the size of the retail spaces? Here it is shown as a number of small spaces. What would prevent them from being combined into a larger retail facility?
No, they could, they, this could become one larger retail space. It could become even more retail spaces. My understanding is that this is close to as small as they could be while still being effective or viable as, you know, marketing them to potential retailers.
But for this purpose, the drawing is just illustrative of what the retail might...
Yes, yeah, the partitions, so we see these kind of white partitions between the retail spaces. That's effectively illustrative.
Okay. But my real question had to do with the pedestrian path through this space. And if you imagine entering straight from Water Street and you want to be going straight out and through, or you want to be drawn straight through in a way that indicates that it's public, you pretty quickly come to that barrier...
That is a bench with a planter.
Okay, so why is it right in the middle of the pedestrian pathway?
So, it's a great question. The, I mean, there's, this is the minimum amount of tables and chairs that's envisioned in the space. They could provide more, so an area like this could allow them to provide more seating. They are meeting the requirement of having a 10-foot-wide pedestrian circulation path through the space, and it currently kind of meanders around the public amenities rather than being a straight shot. The thought was, again, in other market hall examples looked to in the city, that there's rarely just a straight shot through the spaces. There's kind of this meandering pathway. There is, there would be a direct visual connection, because all the amenities are quite low, from, if you're standing at Water Street to Pearl Street.
Okay. Well, maybe this is something we can dig into further when it comes back for the public hearing, because there, you know, there is a tension between wanting it to be active and useful and vibrant while still looking like public space, not somebody's shopping mall.
Absolutely.
I'll note that that went into our thinking about the signage, that with the smaller shops, more likely to be local small businesses, and so we wanted the possibility to have signs for each of the small businesses. In looking at the mock-up, we couldn't imagine that more than 16 would be there, and so that's why we capped the number of signs.
Yeah, that certainly helped, but it also then, also makes it feel like a mall, so...
Exactly, the busyness versus...
Don't get me wrong, this is, this is miles better than what's there now, and clearly a, you know, project worth pursuing, but it, having gotten it wrong, so badly wrong in the 80s, we ought to try to do better this time.
And also build in the resiliency, which was the one other major lesson learned here. Commissioner Deloze?
Why, what was the justification for including three kiosks versus the one? What was the thinking there?
Just more retailers, more variety of options.
The same tension that Commissioner Levin had pointed out. Other questions?
I'll just pile on. These are essentially schematics, right? These, this, this obviously isn't the final configuration, but...
Yes and no. I mean, the benches are fixed, so that's where they're proposed to be. Tables and chairs are movable and could be relocated.
Yeah. Well, given the proximity between that middle kiosk, well, the third kiosk, actually...
This one?
Yeah. And the benches.
And the benches.
Clearly looks like they're proprietary to whoever mans the kiosk. So I think that's something we, I guess we can pursue when the public hearing is here.
Other comments?
Just note, there is not a hearing on this. It's an authorization.
This is an authorization.
So it will come back with the community boards, and there will be a conversation. Yeah, there just won't be an opportunity for the applicant to come and present their case. That's the difficulty.
But we will certainly be passing along all of these comments to the applicant and working with them to address it.
Okay.
Okay, so we will refer this to the community board for 45 days. And Commissioner Cirillo, if you, in wearing your other hat, your second job, may have had some experience with this in your district, and so when it comes back, maybe any insights would be helpful.
Yes, I, that'd be terrific.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The sixth item on the agenda, page 225, is a non-ULIP referral of a minor modification of a previously approved special permit in Queens Community District 2. Our presenter is Nolan Gray.
Madam Chair, I wish to be recused on this matter. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hope you had a nice Thanksgiving. This is 6902 Queens Boulevard Minor Modification. This is a modification to a large-scale general development approved by this commission in 2018, just along Queens Boulevard. As far as where the project's located, it's located in Queens Community District 2, near the intersection of Woodside, Masbeth, and Elmhurst, right between Queens Boulevard and the Long Island Railroad right-of-way, and it's just east of the BQE. As far as the local zoning and land use context, the project is in an R7X zone. This was mapped in 2006 along Queens Boulevard as part of the 2006 Masbeth-Woodside rezoning. Much of the area along the Boulevard is still comprised of low-density commercial, but there has been some R7X-style development, which you'll see in the next slide. In 2018, as part of large-scale general development, the R7X zoning district was pulled south to cover the entirety of the project site. So here's the local scale context. You can see the project site labeled with the yellow dashed line. This is an irregular 71,000-square-foot lot, and you can see some of the nearby R7X-style development that was intended by the 2006 rezoning, generally eight to 11 stories. So just a little bit of history on the project. In 2018, this commission approved the zoning map amendment, special permit, and text amendment associated with this site, and this facilitated an east and a west tower rising to a height of 14 and 17 stories respectively, comprised of a total of six FAR, made up of 5.92 FAR residential, and a small amount of community facility floor area. This produced 561 dwelling units, of which 169 units were affordable pursuant to MIH option two. Subsequent, oh, excuse me, and a key part of the application, too, is the publicly accessible open area, which would be along the southwest of the site, which, if you look back here at the local context, would essentially add a nice local publicly accessible cut-through from 69th Street to 47th Avenue. Having visited the site recently, it is very unpleasant to walk under the Long Island Railroad, excuse me, Long Island Railroad right-of-way. So this was proposed as an amenity for the local community. You can see that here. So subsequent to this commission's approval, the city council approved the application with the following modifications. First, a public school was to be included in the east tower. There would be a reduction in heights on the west tower from 17 to 15 stories. The east tower would be reduced from 14 to 12 stories, and so this would eliminate the need for a height waiver on the east tower. So while the permitted FAR was not explicitly changed, this had the effect of reducing de facto FAR to 5.48. So subsequent to this, a few things happened. First, the applicant acquired Lot 8, which is this small 300-square-foot, highly irregular lot on the block. They had issues acquiring it in the lead-up to the 2018 approvals. And then, of course, the school was included in the project. And so they're coming back to this commission, seeking a few modifications to accommodate this new project. First, of course, they need to include Lot 8 into the site plan. This doesn't really have any effect on payable square foot. It's only a 300-square-foot lot. Second, they've proposed to increase the lot coverage from 47.1% to 50.9%. So this would accommodate a larger residential footprint with the goal of recapturing some of the lost floor area and units to make the project feasible with the school added. And this development would ultimately come out, including 353 market-rate units and 100... And this development would ultimately come out, including 353 market-rate units and 152 MIH units, as well as, again, the small amount of commercial space on the ground floor, but importantly, approximately one FAR, or 70,000, 71,000 square feet dedicated to the new public school. And they're already fairly far along with conversations with SCA on this project. So I've thrown a lot of numbers at you about units and how it's changed over time, so just to run through it, the 2018 CPC approval was 561 units, 169 affordable. City Council dropped it down to 431 with 129 affordable. And then the current modified proposal, which is under your review today, is 505 units, of which 152 would be permanently affordable. So what exactly is changing as part of these modifications? Well, first, the lot coverage is changing very slightly. With the west tower, there'd be a pullback of 10 feet into the interior of the lot and the raised open area, which is open to residents. And then on the east tower, it would be shifted back 3 feet to the north. And again, these are both on the interior of the site. There'd be small changes to the base heights. On the west tower, the base heights would increase from 8 to 10 stories, and the east tower base heights would increase from 8 to 9 stories. And I would just flag that this was not a matter of waivers for the first application, the 2018 application, but it is an element of change. And then finally, the open space. So this was the original open space. A lot of passive open space opened to residents, as well as the publicly accessible cut-through area along the Long Island Railroad right-of-way. So a few important changes here. First, the large portion of the open space is now being consumed by a schoolyard, and so you can see that in the southeast portion of the green-labeled space. They would also be shifting more toward programmed open space. So the applicant has proposed to include a residential garden, fitness area, and an outdoor kitchen, as well as more movable tables and chairs. So just to quickly run through some of the recent developments with the site, or with the project, in September, the applicant presented the project to Queens Community Board 2 Laney Subcommittee. They referred it to the full board with a positive recommendation. Subsequent to this, the council member issued a letter to the chair of this commission requesting rejection of the proposed modifications on the basis of the increase in unit count. The applicant subsequently issued a letter in response to this, indicating that that was not the nature of their agreement, and you can find both letters in your briefing package. The community board has resolved to continue forward with a positive recommendation to the full board with regard to the modifications, and it's scheduled for, excuse me, full board review, actually, this Friday, December 5. So for that reason, we're requesting a 30-day referral. And thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
A couple of things that I will note is that the changes that were made at the council modification, which then came back to the commission and were determined to be in scope, had to do with respect to the number of stories, the height of the building, not the number of units that were there. The second thing I'll note is that there is a request for an increase in the permitted lot coverage, I believe from 47 to 51. But Nolan, can you help me? What is the permitted lot coverage?
So for a corner lot in R7X, it would be 100%.
Okay, so it still falls well within what it is that is permitted? And so we have, we will be analyzing this under the rules for minor modifications of large scales. And I had thought, Nolan, that we were referring it to the community board for 45 days.
We were discussing 30, 45. Of course, it's at your discretion.
Okay. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Capelli.
Who's the council member involved?
Councilmember Holden.
Holden?
Yes.
Commissioner, please.
Are there other examples of schoolyards in the middle of, you know, residential space? I just imagine there, there would be sound issues, you know, in some conflict of uses.
That's a good question. There will be a 10-foot fence, which I think is SCA standards for this.
Could you go back to the plan, maybe? There.
Yeah. So there'd be a fence, and a small landscaping buffer, but, yeah, to my knowledge, it would be on the same level. And I'm not aware of any comparable examples of this.
I wonder what they're going to be doing to just make sure that the residents and the schoolchildren can coexist. You know, I would imagine that's a new concern for them.
It's also interesting, perhaps in light of the fact that the space is smaller, it has moved from what had been before largely passive space to more programmed areas. Significantly for us to pass through the cut-through connecting to, so you don't have to walk under the Long Island wherever it does remain. Commissioner Levin.
You know, this is, this is a complicated one. This application gave us a certain amount of difficulty here, and then it was pretty significantly modified at the council. I don't think we've ever had a case where an applicant has come back to essentially revisit a project after the city council has signed off on it. I think it's tremendous that eventually a school was included in the project. That was something that the community board is really concerned about in adding this much. I think the applicant is technically correct, and as you reflected, Marissa, in pointing out that the modification only had to do with height, it didn't mention density. But in fact, we're handicapped, or we don't have a letter from the community board. We don't know exactly what, we don't have a public record of what their issues were. But it is reflected in the Queens Borough President's letter, which refers to both height and density. We do know that they were mostly concerned about the height, but there was mention of density. But I also remember on this one, we spent a lot of time, before we voted, trying to figure out how we could shrink the towers but retain the same amount of development space, and the argument always was that that would make very long, skinny units that would be unusable. It doesn't look as if they're changing, this is still a double-loaded corridor building. I don't understand how they're getting so many more units in the same amount of space
Yeah.
With the reduced towers.
Yeah. If you'd like, I could ask the applicant to provide more context about that.
Yeah. To explain the, how the unit change works, when it is kind of like the change that they told us wasn't possible in 2018.
It may have helped, because if you recall, these changes were being made as the school was added after the planning commission had already voted, as it was pending before the council. But we should be able to get more information on that as well.
Yeah, and then I had a question about affordability. What level, I gather this is now being planned as a, as an Option 2 project.
Correct.
As I recall, at the time, the area need really would have suggested Option 1 was more desirable. On the other hand, now they're including a school, which is an additional cost. I don't know how you balance that out, but if the neighborhood, and maybe this won't be a concern for the community board, but I would think that some of, if some of these additional units could reach, some of the new, the units that are now being added that weren't there before, could be at a lower income level, that would be to the public good.
And Commissioner Levin, to your comment about the community board, the applicant has already met with them before, and there will be a meeting coming up during this review period, and so we anticipate having more information from the community board.
Okay, and in that case, it would really be, it would be helpful to us if the community board could communicate with us. Last time, we didn't get a letter from them.
We can ask them. Other comments? Commissioner, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Will this go back to the council or would not?
No, this is a minor modification.
Right, okay.
Okay, I think that, given the significant questions that have been raised by the commissioners, that we should refer it out for 45 days, and that should increase the likelihood that we will hear from the community board.
Okay, thank you.
The seventh item on our agenda, page 344, is a certification of a city map amendment that is in the Bronx, but is also in Queens Community District 1. Philip will explain, and Philip is our presenter on this.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The applicants, the New York City Department of Corrections, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and City Council Speaker Cory Johnson are seeking an amendment to the city map. The proposed amendment involves the establishment of a public place designation across the entirety of Rikers Island in order to facilitate the closing of the island for incarceration purposes. Rikers Island is located in the East River, in the area bounded to the north by the Hunts Point area of the Bronx, and to the south by LaGuardia Airport and the DeMarsteinway neighborhood of Queens. Rikers Island has a C-82 zoning designation. This C-82 district typically bridges a gap between commercial and manufacturing districts. Uses include auto repair shops, gas stations, offices, hotels, warehouses, et cetera. Housing is not permitted in a C-82 district. And as Ryan said, while Rikers is geographically part of the Bronx, it is under the jurisdiction of Queens Community Board 1. Rikers Island was originally a 90-acre island acquired by the city in the late 19th century. Over time, it has been expanded by landfill to its current size of approximately 430 acres. Plans for a detention center began as early as 1925, and the first major center was opened in the 1930s. In 1966, the Rikers Island Bridge was constructed, connecting the island to Queens. Prior to construction of the bridge, access to the island was by ferry. Rikers currently has 10 detention centers, eight of which are in use. There are currently just over 5,000 incarcerated individuals on Rikers Island, and approximately 6,800 people in Department of Corrections custody. Though the jails on the island have a maximum capacity to house over 10,000 individuals in active facilities. Accessory facilities on the island include a visitor's center, laundry facilities, a bakery, and parking. Access to the island is restricted to Department of Corrections authorized vehicles and the MTA-operated Q100 bus line. Public place. Public place is a designation that dates back to the late 1800s. It designates city-owned property for public use that sometimes is not known at the time the public place is established on the city map. There are at least 80 such areas on the city map, including parts of Battery Park City and the Lincoln Center. The public place designation would reserve Rikers Island for a public purpose permitted under the existing C-82 zoning. After December 31, 2026, the public place designation would prohibit the use of Rikers Island for incarceration purposes. This is the alteration map, and you get, there's Rikers and there's the public place designation. This mapping proposal would not result in any new development. A future use of Rikers Island has not been identified at this time, other than it would not be used for the incarceration of individuals after December 31, 2026. Any future proposals for the redevelopment of Rikers Island would be subject to future planning and public review processes, including separate approval and environmental review as necessary. Thank you.
Questions from the commission. Commissioner Mardine.
So, in essence, marking this a public place would not restrict the type of development that would be able to be built there in the future, at some point?
Yes, it would restrict the use for incarceration purposes, but it could be developed for...
Let me rephrase my question. Other than incarceration, because we know that's being taken off the table...
Yes.
What does the public place designation, what would be buildable under a public place designation?
Any use that serves the public. It could, in recent stories, it could be solar panels, it could be, you know, a wind farm, expansion of LaGuardia, any use that benefits the public and serves the public.
It could be residential as well, right?
No, housing is not permitted.
Yeah.
You're thinking about the public place site in Gowanus. It's going to be rezoned.
Correct.
If one were to want to put housing there, it would have to be rezoned, and that would go through an entire ULP. But again, to stress, they're not, I'm not aware of any plans for putting housing.
I'm not suggesting that they are, but I am certainly aware of the fact that people are concerned about what the use of this island will be after it is decommissioned as, as a jail. So the concern is out there, and needs to be talked about, needs to be mentioned and continued, because I have worked on a site that was, that was called a public place site that became residential, so that becomes a concern.
Right, through a rezoning. Again, that, that's Philip's final point, is that it would be subject both to the planning but also a full ULP for a zoning. Commissioner Capelli.
I guess in the same vein. It says, "subject to future planning and public review processes."
Yes.
Would that be your or any review process?
It could be ULP. There's, are plans for...
But it's not guaranteed that it would go ULP.
Not guaranteed.
For example, if the Port Authority had its own process to, you know, expand to the airport or something like that, that would be a different process.
Yes, but that would eliminate the community from really having any say whatsoever.
That would be, that would be a political, yeah, that would be a different process.
And I will note on this that it is an interesting applicant team, that the applicant is the Department of Corrections, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and the City Council Speaker jointly are filing this application. Commissioner Mardine.
So I'm just trying to say, why is this necessary, and why is it necessary now?
This was a concern that was expressed during the borough-based jails approval process, that somehow, a fear that the new borough-based jails would be built and Rikers would continue to operate as a detention facility.
Prevent Rikers continuing as a correctional facility.
And so this puts an absolute end date on the time when Rikers can be used, and that's why I noted the unusual triumvirate of applicants, and I think it was to send a message that it was the administration working with the council, having this shared vision, that as of the end of 2026, one could not use the island for detention purposes. Commissioner Levin.
Well, as someone who articulated exactly that concern during the public review process, I'm glad to see this. Potentially quite elegant and creative solution to the problem. I think it's an important, well, I would use the word gesture, but I hope it's more than just a gesture, to express a public commitment that Rikers really, truly is going to close. 2026 seems like just around the corner, so, and one certainly hopes that the borough-based jail construction process gets rolling and completed by that time. But what happens when we get to December 31, 2026, and there are still incarcerated people on Rikers? How does this public place designation apply if there are still incarcerated people there on that date?
I will pass that question on to the applicant team and have them...
I don't want to go looking for the negatives, because I really want it to, to work out that it's not necessary, but locking this down, I think we need to understand what might happen if we don't quite meet that deadline.
Sure. I'll note that one of the little known joys of being the chair is signing the actual vellums on proposed map changes, and when Philip brought it up to me, we smiled at how unique this was on this kind of designation for this particular island. Okay, if there are no other questions, we'll certify this application and begin the public review. Oh, yes, Commissioner Levin.
So is it only going to Queens 1, or is it...
It will go to both Borough Presidents and Queens Community Board 1.
Shouldn't it also go to each of the other boroughs that had a role in the borough-based jail, creation of the borough-based jail system? Because it was really, the commitment to closing Rikers was a shared public commitment.
But the action affects a piece of land that sits within that community board.
Okay, well, so maybe at least affirmatively notifying them that this is starting. It doesn't have to formally be, I mean, that formally, the certification is just in these districts, but I think we really owe it to the public to broadly advertise that this ULP is starting.
No, gladly, we'll notify them.
We'll notify them.
There's no secret about this. This was quite a public event.
The eighth item on the agenda, page 349, is a pre-hearing review of a city map amendment in Bronx Community District 4, and Philip is again our presenter.
So yes, returning for pre-hearing reviews and application by the Department of Parks and Recreation, seeking an amendment to the city map. As you may recall, the proposed amendment involves the elimination, discontinuance, and closure... and closing of Exterior Street and West 171st Street between the High Bridge and the Alexander Hamilton Bridge, and the establishment of parkland in the High Bridge neighborhood of Bronx Community District Four. Proposed amendment would facilitate a 3.82-acre expansion of Bridge Park and the Harlem River Greenway. The project site is located in a M-11 zoning district just north of the High Bridge. It is bounded to the east by the Hudson Line of Metro North Railway and the elevated Major Deegan Expressway, to the north by the Alexander Hamilton and Washington Bridges, and to the west by the Harlem River. The only public access to the project site is non-vehicular access through Bridge Park from the north. The project area includes Block 2541, lots 122, 132, and 159, equalling 2.4 acres of city-owned property, and the 1.42-acre portions of mapped Exterior Street and West 171st Street that are to be mapped as parkland. Exterior Street is city-owned and mapped to a width of 40 feet. West 171st Street is city-owned and mapped to a width of 60 feet. These streets do not serve any private property and only serve as access to the three city-owned lots for maintenance, access to the Alexander Hamilton Bridge. So this is looking north from the High Bridge. This is at the intersection of Exterior and 171st Street, near the Alexander Hamilton. And this is underneath the Alexander Hamilton, looking south at the project site. The project is fully funded at $5.6 million. Construction is anticipated to begin in 2020 and be completed in mid-2021. The Community Board Four voted 31 in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions to approve, and the Borough President likewise issued a recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Feist, Chair Knuckles.
Philip, are there any visions, for aesthetic visions, for what might happen here?
It's still in the conceptual phase, and Parks will be here tomorrow, and they can further expand on that.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Then we will see at least the Parks Department at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
The ninth item on the agenda, page 356, is a non-U-LR post-referral review of a minor change to an urban renewal plan in Brooklyn, Community District Five. Our presenter is Alexandra Patty Diaz.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development proposes a minor change to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan to facilitate the last phase of the plan resulting in 560 affordable rental units for a total of approximately 2,400 units. The project is located in its New York Community District Five in Brooklyn. HPD is requesting a minor change to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan that was adopted in 1967. The plan has been amended three times to facilitate residential, commercial, and community facility developments in the area. The Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan is located on the south portion of East New York. The urban renewal area is bounded by Flatlands to the north, Fontan Avenue to the east, Belt Parkway to the south, and Hendrix Creek to the west. The Fairfield Flatlands IBZ is located to the north, Spring Creek Park to the east, Starred City is located to the west, and two away CDP wastewater treatment plants in both east and west side of the development area. The plan has been developed through a multi-phase project that includes mixed-use residential and commercial developments with up to 2,400 affordable homeownership and rental units, regional and local retail spaces, community facility, and open space uses. Here you can see some of the current buildings that's in around the site, highlighting the corridors and the Gateway Plaza, which is one of the most successful malls in the city and in the country. The proposed project area is located on the northwest corner of the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Area and corresponds to urban renewal sites 3A, 3B, 3D, 3E, 3F, 6A, and 7A. The land use designation for this site is residential. Broadly bounded by Flatlands Avenue to the north, Vandelia Avenue to the south, Elton Street to the east, and Gateway Drive to the west. The area is currently vacant, underdeveloped, and is mapped R-6 zoning district. The fifth phase is expected to produce 560 residential units as part of the NEEMIA Spring Creek Program. It will consist of approximately 17 new four-story octet buildings. HPD is requesting a minor change to the plan to increase the total maximum number of dwelling units of Section C-3C-1 from 2,885 to 2,477 dwelling units, and to modify Table A of the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan, the total maximum number of units will increase from 432 to 560 for the urban renewal sites 3B, 3D, 3E, 3F, 6A, and 7A, and to modify the high limits permitted from three stories to four stories for the urban renewal sites 3B, 3D, 3E, and 6A. City Planning Commission refer this proposal on September 9 of this year. Community Board did not submit a recommendation, and the CPC vote is scheduled for today.
I want to note the challenge that Alexandra faces in having a community board that frequently doesn't meet, and when it does meet, doesn't issue us recommendations. The department is certainly comfortable with these changes. We believe that it is a minor change to the prior approvals. And so I first ask if there's any discussion or comment. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
I think when this was referred out, I had a question about the affordability program.
Yes, and I have the numbers for you.
Do you have some further information on that?
Yes. It's very early to the process, but they have a draft of the affordability that they want to reach. So 10% will be for formerly homeless, 50% up to 30% AMI, 10% to 40% AMI, 10% to 50% AMI, 12.5% up to 70% AMI, 12.5% up to 80% AMI, and 30% up to 90% AMI.
That's just a healthy mix. Thank you for getting that.
Other questions? Then I'll ask for an assent by show of hands to send HPD a letter letting them know that this is a minor change. Okay, adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
The 10th item on the agenda, page 399, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Blake Montith.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application to facilitate the development of a new mixed residential, commercial, and community facility building in Astoria, Community District One, Queens. The owner of a development site at 2260 46th Street is jointly applying with the Pansyprian Association, who is a local theater group, to rezon one block on Didmars Boulevard from light industrial M-11 and low-density residential R-4 districts to R-6A and R-4 districts with a C-23 commercial overlay on a portion of the block. They're also applying to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over a portion of the rezoning area. The requested actions would allow for a new eight-story building with about 88 total residential units, including about 28 affordable units, and a 250-seat theater in the cellar. The rezoning area is located on the south side of Didmars Boulevard, between 45th and 46th Streets, north of the Grand Central Parkway, and northwest of St. Michael's Cemetery. The Astoria Didmars N. and W. Subway Station is about a 15- to 20-minute walk away. The development site is shown here in red. The surrounding area is predominantly a residential neighborhood, but there's a small cluster of commercial and light industrial uses around the rezoning area. The rezoning area includes the entirety of Block 769 outlined here in a dotted black line, and a six-story, 70-foot-tall condominium building, and accessory parking deck occupy the northern half of the block. The development site, shown here in red, is a through-block site in the mid-block, south of the Pastilly Manor parking garage, and it currently includes the applicant's office and warehouse on 46th Street, as well as a vacant plumbing supply store on 45th Street. The remainder of the block to the south of the development site includes one-to-two-story residential buildings and one one-story commercial building. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to map R-6A on the northern portion of the block, including the Pastilly Manor condominium building and the development site, and the remaining portion of the block would be rezoned from M-11 to R-4. A C-23 commercial overlay would be mapped on the southeastern corner of the block along 45th Street to be consistent with current commercial businesses in that area. The applicant states that the proposed zoning strategy is a rational approach to land use in the area, with higher density fronting Didmars Boulevard with a step down to the lower-scale neighborhood to the south. With the requested actions, the applicant is also required to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area over a portion of the rezoning area. This would be applied to the R-6A portion of the rezoning area because MIH is not available in R-4 residential districts. The applicant seeks to allow for MIH Option 2 and the workforce option in this MIH area, and they intend to pursue the workforce option in their proposed development. And more information about each of those options are here. On October 10, Queens Community Board One held a public hearing and voted to recommend disapproval of the proposed applications, unless the applicant lower the building heights to better reflect the surrounding R-4 context, to pursue MIH Option 1, and to pursue 30% of the residential floor area under MIH Option 1, to limit the maximum number of units to 88 units as they presented to the community board, to maintain the unit mix as they presented to the community board, generally skewing more towards one, two, and three-bedroom units and no studios, to provide landscaped areas that are accessible to the public as they presented to the community board, to increase the number of off-street parking spaces on-site, and to provide discounts for residents and theater attendees, and to limit theater use to nonprofit, community, and cultural groups. And we have not received a recommendation from the Borough President. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Levin.
Is the reduction in, the proposed reduction in, the applicant indicated the community board, and in a letter that we received a copy of, that they were proposing to reduce the number of units to 88. Is that bringing about any change in density or in building height?
Not necessarily. So the amount of residential floor area...
Just more bigger units.
Exactly. So they originally proposed 136 units when they certified, when the commission certified the application, and they received feedback from the community board that, at the time, they were proposing far too many studios and one-bedrooms. And so they've increased the size of the units and have overall decreased the number of units, but it's the same amount of residential floor area.
Thank you. Commissioner Mardine.
So just a question. We seem to be steadily losing more and more manufacturing zones. And how does this fit into that picture? Because I know a lot of people are concerned about that problem.
Sure. So I think that this location is interesting because it's next to the Pastilly Building, which was formerly one of the Steinway Piano Factory's first factories. The neighborhood overall has evolved over time. I think this community in this area really see the neighborhood now as a residential neighborhood, but there are still sort of manufacturing uses in the area. So I think that the applicant is interested and sees potential in residential here, but they could also, I think that they also see a market for other uses as well.
Commissioner Delos.
For the hearing, it'd be helpful to hear from the applicant about the justification for the workforce option. And also, although I hear the community board's feedback about the unit mix, I'm wondering how that tracks with actual households in the community board. And certainly, the skewing that, the change seems to have kind of not heard the feedback from recent research that the city has done about the need for studio one-bedroom units. So, you know, it'd be helpful to have more of a mix and to make sure that it's based on data and not just anecdotes.
Sure. We can provide more information about the local population.
Great. Other comments? Okay, then we will see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 12 and 11, we are tracking down a missing planner. So we will move to item 13.
We're moving too quickly and efficiently.
Yeah. And item 13 is page 45. It's a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Staten Island, Community District Three. Our presenter is Olivia Sullivan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a private application seeking land use actions to facilitate the development of two commercial buildings containing retail and office spaces with approximately 100,000 square feet and 223 parking spaces in an M-11 district in the Charleston neighborhood of Staten Island's Community District Three. This area contains a mix of commercial shopping centers and office uses within the C-41 and M-11 zoning districts in the special South Richmond Development District. The development site is a 4.5-acre, irregular-shaped vacant zoning lot that is heavily wooded and contains New York State DEC-regulated wetland-adjacent area that connects to the Mill Creek Blue Belt. The site has approximately 40 feet of frontage along Veterans Road West and has access to Terrellan Avenue through a 30-foot-wide voluntary access easement on adjacent tax lot 170. There's a mapped two-foot-wide city-owned park strip along the rear of the site, which serves as a buffer preventing access from the site to the highway network. As stated previously, two buildings containing retail and office uses are proposed on-site. Retail Building A would be a two-story, approximately 35 feet in height, and contain approximately 97,000 square feet of floor area with an outdoor pedestrian plaza. Retail Building B would be a one-story, approximately 16 feet in height, and contain 3,000 square feet of floor area. 223 parking spaces are proposed on this site, with 179 on-grade and 44 in the cellar of Retail Building A. To facilitate the proposed development of the scale, the applicant is requesting to modify topography and remove trees on-site. The applicant is proposing to cut and fill more than the amount permitted by zoning to ensure a level parking area for vehicular and pedestrian access, and is proposing to remove all existing trees on-site except for 13 located within the wetland-adjacent area. The applicant will plant new trees to meet the South Richmond zoning requirements. Internal circulation would be provided by a center drive accessed via a 40-foot curb cut on Veterans Road West. The applicant is proposing cross-access connections to both Lot 170 and Lots 193 and 196. The cross-access connection for Lots 193 and 196 is proposed to be built out. The terms of the conditional negative declaration include providing a signal at the intersection of Veterans Road West at the proposed center drive, and in addition, the curb cut on Terrellan Avenue will be required to be monitored once one of the proposed buildings have been built. These conditions will be memorialized in a restrictive declaration. On October 22, Staten Island's Community Board Three voted unanimously in favor of the application, and on November 21, the Borough President recommended favorable adoption of the application. I'm available for any questions.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner Mardine.
I don't suppose there's anything to be done about the architecture of this project, is there?
You can ask the applicant, they'll be here on Wednesday, about the style they've chosen.
Okay, thank you.
You have something against Italianate villas.
You know, Ingrid Huxtable wrote a letter in the 80s titled "Mansarding of America", where she decried this use of buildings that, mansards stuck on the front, and it continues to this day.
day.
Other comments? Okay, we'll see this then at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Going back up to item 11, page 440, is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Queens, Community District 7, and our presenter is Hi Keng.
I apologize. It's stuck in the elevator. Slower. Hurry up.
Better than being stuck in the snowstorm.
That's true. The applicant, 1817 and 1819, 130th Street LLC, is seeking up special permit to modify yard regulations to allow enlargement of an existing one-story building in the College Point area of Queens, Community District 7. The project is located within an M11 zoning district and follows the regulation of the College Point Special District. The corporate park environment of the special district was to be sustained by requiring front and side yards, restricting signage and loading locations, and setting higher parking requirements for certain commercial uses. Enclosure or screening provisions are required to minimize impacts upon neighboring uses. The area surrounding the project site is characterized by a predominantly light manufacturing and commercial uses contained within one- and two-story warehouses, buildings, which reflect the special district. The project site is comprised of two tax lots to be merged into a single zoning lot. It is on the eastern portion of 130th Street between 18th and 20th Avenue on block 4136, lots 11 and 12. Lot 11 is a 2,000-square-feet rectangular lot with 20 feet of frontage along 130th Street. The lot is vacant and applicant-owned. Lot 12 is a 4,000-square-feet rectangular lot with 40 feet of frontage along 130th Street. It is improved in an existing one-story, 2,400-square-feet sprinkler supply warehouse building. The 40-foot-wide building has a 2.9-foot, pre-existing, non-compliant front yard, where 15 feet is required, and has no side yards, where 10-foot side yards are required in the special district. On the left is a view facing the existing building on Lot 12 and the vacant lot on Lot 11 along 130th Street. On the right is a view of the project site to the left and the surrounding pre-existing warehouse buildings that cover the entire lot area. The proposed special permit would facilitate the expansion of the existing 2,400-square-feet one-story building on Lot 12, shown in the light gray, to a 6,000-square-foot, two-story building to encompass the entirety of Lot 11 and 12, shown in the darker gray. The green shade indicates the 10-foot side yard requirement, and the blue shade indicates a 15-foot yard requirement, a front yard requirement the applicant requests us to waive. The ground floor of the proposed development would contain warehouse space with seven parking lots, and the second floor would contain accessory offices. The proposed development would result in a 60-foot-wide, two-story building with no side yards and a vertical enlargement to create a second-story, 30-foot-tall building. The ground floor would also be enlarged to the rear yard lot line. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 12643 to waive their requirements of the front yard and side yard to facilitate a building with a larger floor plate for a more efficient and functional business operation that would internalize truck movement and deliveries, as well as facilitate a second-floor accessory offices to complement the warehouse operations. On September 23rd, 2019, the community board voted 33 in favor and 2 abstained, and on November 12th, the community, the borough president voted in favor of the project. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission. Okay, then we'll see this at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item 12, page 466, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens, Community District 7, and Hi Keng will again present.
Again. Okay. This is a private application from ADA 50 Management LLC, seeking a zoning map amendment to map a C12 commercial overlay in an existing R3A district in the Whitestone neighborhood of Queens, CD7. The project area is located south of Cross Island Parkway and is zoned R3A. The 2005 Whitestone rezoning mapped C12, C13, and C22, C22, commercial overlays along commercial thoroughfares in the area to recognize pre-existing commercial uses and reinforce future commercial and mixed-use developments along the corridor. The existing land use in the area is characterized by a mix of attached, detached, and semi-detached two-to-three-story family houses with commercial uses north of Cross Island Parkway and several pre-existing legal non-conforming commercial and retail uses along 149th Street. This includes a cigar shop, smoke shop, elevator service office, and scrap metal material yard on block 4645, located directly north of the project site. The proposed rezoning area consists of five lots on a single triangular block, block 4646. The development site is located on Lot 8 and is improved with a two-story office building. Lot 10 is improved with a two-story, two-family residential use. Lot 10 is included in the proposed rezoning, but is, it is considered development site because Lot 8 and Lot 10 is considered a single zoning lot under DOB records. The proposed commercial overlay is also over three other lots that face 149th Street. Lot 14 is improved with a gas station. Lot 12 is improved with a two-and-a-half-story, two-family residence, and Lot 11 is improved with a restaurant on the ground floor and residents above. This is a view of the project site from 15th Avenue. This is a view of the mobile gas station on the corner of 149th Street and 15th Avenue on the right, adjacent to the project site, and on the left is Leola Restaurant, Italiana Restaurant, a pre-existing, non-conforming eating and drinking establishment. On the left, you see Lot 11, the Beer Garden Restaurant, and on the right, Lot 12, at the two-family residential use. The applicant is seeking this commercial overlay to bring into conformance existing commercial use. The development site has historically been occupied with several commercial uses, including a kitchen design firm, a daycare center in the basement, and a paint store. The applicant believes the proposed rezoning is consistent with the existing C12 commercial overlays in the project area, and believes this would permit local retail and office uses in an area that already contains its uses. In addition, the proposed action would serve to reduce the degree of nonconformance within the zoning area. On September 23rd, the community board voted 23 in favor and 13 against. Those who voted against heard from neighbors who voiced against the rezoning, and it's my understanding it's because the neighbor did not have a full understanding of the boundaries or the scope of the commercial overlay. The applicant rep spoke with the neighbor post the community board hearing, and clarified to the neighbor what the action, proposed application was doing, and on November 12th, the community, I mean, the borough president voted in approval with, of the application with no objections. The applicant rep is prepared to answer the Commissioner's questions from August regarding the history of the project site and why the applicant chose this route versus the BSA at the public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Chair Knuckles.
A kitchen design firm, a paint store, and a daycare center?
Yep.
In the basement?
Yes. Well, the daycare center would be a community facility, as of right, but that's the history of the site, yes. So they had originally bought the site thinking that commercial use was allowed, and that was not the case, and that's why they were here today with this commercial overlay.
Wow.
You're taken with the combo of uses.
Yeah, yeah, especially the paint store, you know, in proximity to the daycare center. That's, I think raises some, some questions.
The applicant will be here on Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll get that question answered at the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on, item 14 is to be laid over to allow the applicant to respond more fully to the community board concerns, so that we will see that pre-hearing on the 16th, and then the hearing will be held on the 18th. Item 15, page 568, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments and special permit. The project also involves authorizations and modifications of a previously approved large-scale residential development. It is in Manhattan, Community District 3, and Matthew Pietrus is our presenter.
Hello again. This is a private application for a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, zoning authorization, and large-scale waivers coming back from public review. These actions would facilitate two new mixed-use developments in Manhattan, Community District 3. As you may recall, the project is in the Lower East Side, just south of Delancey Street, and the new and under-construction buildings that are part of the Essex Crossing development. The project area is coterminous with the Seward Park Extension West LSRD, which is shown here in the dotted white line. Shown in blue is the current zoning lot, which consists of two existing buildings, the Hong Ning Building, which contains senior housing, and 384 Grand Street, which is a five-story residential and commercial building. It also contains Lot 75, which contains a parking lot that is accessory to the Hong Ning Senior Building. As part of this application, the LSRD would be modified to reflect two changes in the zoning lot. First, 384 Grand Street would be subdivided out of the zoning lot into a separate zoning lot. It would still remain a part of the LSRD, and in the future, with the proposed actions, may expand its commercial floor area by about 5,000 square feet. Second, the site, which contained the former Beth Hamadras Hagadal synagogue, would be included in the zoning lot and incorporated into the LSRD. The proposed development site is shown here in red and would contain the two new mixed-use buildings proposed to be built on the parking lot and on the site of the former synagogue. The proposed development would contain two new mixed-use buildings containing mostly residential use with some commercial and community facility space. It would contain a total of 488 dwelling units, 208 of which would be affordable. Currently, 93 of the units are proposed as MIH Option 1 units, and 115 are proposed as affordable, independent residences for seniors or heirs units. The proposed development on Suffolk Street would rise 310 feet and contain 30 stories. It would contain mostly residential floor area and up to 373 dwelling units and up to 93 affordable units. It would also contain about 40,000 square feet of community facility space dedicated to the Chinese-American Planning Council. The building would also contain some commercial space, which is proposed as retail on the ground floor. The Norfolk Building would rise 16 stories or about 165 feet and would contain all 115 of the proposed heirs units. It would also contain up to 4,000 square feet of community facility space, which would be dedicated to BHH to use as a cultural center. To facilitate these two actions, the applicant seek approval of a series of actions. The first is a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an R8 to an R91 with a C25 overlay. The R91 district allows for a maximum residential FAR of nine and a community facility FAR of 10. It also permits a maximum base height of 125 feet and a maximum building height of 285 feet. The C25 commercial overlay would permit commercial uses within the new developments. Second, the applicant's proposed a text amendment to allow the quality housing program to apply within the LSRD and to map an MIH-designated area. Third, the applicant seeks a zoning authorization to eliminate required parking on the site. Lot 75 currently contains 33 parking spaces, which are underutilized by the residents in the Hong Ning Building. Both developments are proposed to be built on this parking lot. Fourth, the applicant seeks a new special permit and new authorization to waive certain bulk regulations. The waiver site plan to the right of the screen gives an overview of the waivers being sought, and the list to the left shows the waivers by building. The applicant also seeks a waiver to distribute floor area within the LSRD without regard to zoning lot lines. I'll note here that during public review, the applicant submitted an amended application for an additional distance between buildings waiver. This waiver did not change the proposed development in any way, but is needed in order to facilitate the development. The first set of waivers is for the existing Hong Ning Senior Building that was completed in 1982. In 1980, it received heightened setback waivers pursuant to height factor regulations. However, because the proposed text amendment would apply quality housing regulations to the entire zoning lot, these waivers are no longer valid, and the building would become legally noncompliant. The two new waivers would replace Hong Ning's previous waivers for street wall location and heightened setback regulations, and would bring the existing building back into compliance under the new quality housing regulations. For the new developments, the applicant seeks a new special permit to modify distance between building regulations and heightened setback regulations. Under the proposed R91 district for quality housing, the required window-to-window distance is 60 feet, and the required window-to-wall distance is 50 feet. The Suffolk Building is proposed to be located about 47 feet from the existing Hong Ning Building. The third waiver is part of the amended application. For zoning lots that contain multiple buildings, zoning requires that where lot coverage exceeds 40% above a height of 125 feet, buildings must be located 80 feet apart. On this site, lot coverage exceeds 40% between 125 feet and 126.13 feet, which is the height of the existing Hong Ning Building. Therefore, for the vertical distance of 1.13 feet, the applicants are seeking a waiver from this regulation, and that's shown in blue. The applicants also seek heightened setback waivers for the Suffolk Building. In an R91 district, the permitted setback above a maximum base height of 125 feet is 15 feet along an arrow street. The applicants are proposing a base height of 48 feet on Suffolk Street, which is below the maximum allowable base height. This design choice was meant to match the existing context of the street, namely the setbacks of the Essex Crossing development, which underwent significant public engagement. However, in matching this context, the proposed setback is 10 feet, not 15 feet, as required at a base height of 125 feet. The applicants also seek a waiver to exceed the maximum building height. The permitted building height is 285 feet, and the applicants propose a maximum height of 310 feet. Finally, between the vertical distance of 125 feet to 126.13 feet, the applicants are seeking a waiver of distance between buildings. The required distance for this 1.13 feet is 80 feet, and the applicants are proposing 60 feet. The areas where the applicants are seeking waivers are shown in red, and the waiver that's part of the amended application is shown in blue. At the Norfolk Building, the applicant seeks a special permit to modify the distance between buildings. The proposed distance between the Hong Ning Building and the Norfolk Building is about 12 feet, which is less than the 40 feet required as measured from wall to wall, and less than the 80 feet required between buildings at 125 feet. There are no proposed windows on the existing Hong Ning facade or the proposed Norfolk Building. At certification, the commission raised questions about this distance from a design perspective and questioned whether it would create a wind tunnel. The applicant studied the potential for a wind tunnel effect and found that the area would be comfortable and that this would not occur. Regarding design, the applicant has noted that there is an egress from the Hong Ning Building to the side yard, and that the senior residents in that building would like to maintain this egress to access the side yard and newly created open space between the Finally, the applicant seeks a special permit to allow for the transfer of floor area without regard for zoning lot lines. Because 384 Grand Street will be subdivided out of the zoning lot, a waiver is required to allow for the transfer of 15,000 square feet from the transfer site, which is shown in yellow, and the receiving site, which is shown in blue. At certification, the commission asked more about the business terms of this transfer, which the applicant will be prepared to answer at the public hearing. They have noted, though, that the floor area to be transferred will be dedicated to the construction of the heirs units in the proposed Norfolk Building. This application was required to conduct an environmental impact statement. The analysis found no potential for adverse impacts in the chapters on the left of the screen. It did find potential for adverse impacts for transportation as it relates to vehicular and pedestrian traffic, as well as during construction as it relates to traffic and noise. Mitigations to these impacts will be explored between the draft and final EIS. During public review, both the community board and borough president recommended approval of the application with conditions. These conditions were related to affordability, sustainability, open space, design, construction, and traffic. Both the community board and borough president recommended that 50% of all units be affordable, each specifying the income bands for these additional units. They also recommended mitigations to potential impacts that would result from the construction, as well as improvements to sidewalks and open spaces in the immediate vicinity. Their recommendations are included in your materials. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from the Commission. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Well, within a large-scale residential development, aren't you permitted to transfer bulk without the prohibition of zoning lots?
You are. It's, I guess, one of the conditions of the special, or as being a large-scale, but it is still in front of the commission, to meet the findings as a good site plan.
I don't quite follow you.
So in order to, I guess, with large-scale developments, there's, you're allowed to have special permit waivers, you're allowed to transfer without regard for zoning lot lines, and a host of other things, and that's all to make sure that the large-scale has an overall good site plan, and this is just one of those actions that's required. It's not quite the same as a special permit, but it is part of that, with those actions to approve a good site plan.
No, I thought the status... No, I thought the status of a large-scale residential development enables you to do that without the, I thought the status of the LSRD conveyed to the applicant the ability to do that without seeking further.
Sure.
Permission.
It does, you're right. But you, there is an action tied to that. So it's, it's an action that's allowed in large scales, so they're applying for that action, but yes, it's very common in large scales that they apply for that action, so I think it seems as if it's kind of just built into a large scale, because that is basically one of the most fundamental pieces they use, but it is still tied to a city planning action, or a zoning resolution action.
We're allowed to do it, but we have to decide to do it.
Okay, all right.
Other questions? Commissioner Bernie.
This hasn't really changed from when we saw it before, has it? It's only in slight ways. And I just continue to see a lot of bulk being crammed onto a site that can't really take it. So you have to drive a horse and cart through the heightened setback and space between building regulations, and I don't understand why this would be considered a good thing. Is it because we get extra units, or?
So it is to, I mean, the bulk is really to meet the program of the building, a lot of which is affordable. So there's about 43% affordability within both developments across the board. And like you said, it is a constrained site and mostly related to the Hong Ning Building, which is recessed from the street, which is shown in the top left-hand corner of the site plan. And the applicant will speak a lot to this during their presentation and during the Q&amp;A at the public hearing, but it is really a balancing act in trying to make sure that there is adequate light and air that gets into the open spaces, that gets into the existing buildings, that gets into the windows of the proposed building, and also to allow that light and air to reach the street. And so those are the actions that they're requesting currently.
I just don't see, I hope I'm not going to be one of the people living 47 feet away from somebody else's window, and I just don't see the justification for it. Is there nowhere else in the city to build housing? I mean, why are we doing this?
So there is, I think, two slides are out of here, but there are two examples where we did have window to, or minimum distance between building waivers. One of them is Villa Verde in the Bronx, and there, the distance between buildings, it was, there were similar site constraints. There were no existing buildings, but it was a narrow and kind of an irregular-shaped lot, and the distance between buildings there was about 20 feet. I believe that was wall-to-wall. And then there was another large-scale where they had an existing building on West 50th Street. There was a large scale there, where the distance between buildings was, I think, about 20 feet as well, between the proposed building and also between one of the sections of the proposed building and an existing building. And the considerations in both of those actions were that it did create an overall site plan, did allow light and air to the existing community, but also to the proposed buildings, and so we can certainly follow up with the considerations on those in a next meeting, but.
I would also note that these distances, obviously, are what is the norm, in instances where it would be an as-of-right development. Here, we do have the ability, through the large scale, to be able to shape it. When you ask the question of where is it appropriate to have housing, certainly, we as a department look at, one, what the infrastructure is in place, proximity to public transportation, and, again, the existence of the existing Hong Ning Senior Building clearly constrains the site. That doesn't mean that it's open season on any amount of density, but certainly in bringing it forward, we thought that this was an appropriate location, and the applicant, obviously, together with its nonprofit sponsor, will be able to speak to the particulars of it.
Other questions? Okay, then we'll see this on Wednesday at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Item 16 is a scope determination of a city council modification at the 101 Fleet Place. Anthony Grande is here to discuss.
Okay. Thank you. So the 101 Fleet Place rezoning was voted to be modified by the city council and is here for scope determination, so I'll just describe it briefly. As you recall, the application was for a C64 district in downtown Brooklyn, which would have facilitated a 14-story commercial office building. The commission voted to amend the district to a C61, which would essentially reduce the density. It would have resulted in, we had predicted, about a nine-story building. The city council voted to return the district back to the C64, which would be the, as was originally applied for, which is a 10-FAR density. And also, the MIH option had been applied for as Option 1 and 2, and they struck Option 2, just leaving Option 1.
I'll note that this may be a first, in which we have seen the council reinstate a density that the commission had thought was, was too high, but we've examined it, and it is within scope. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Levin.
I know it's not our habit to do a postmortem on the city council's consideration, but are you able to tell us a little bit more about the discussion at the council that brought about this change? It is so very different from anything that's happened before.
From what I've seen, the council explained at the, at their meeting of the land use committee that, you know, they just felt with the context, you know, they described the adjacent buildings being 15 stories on the same block, and the 30-to-40-story buildings across the street, and they just felt that the context was, was okay for the height that was being proposed.
Wasn't there also a discussion of the role of the childcare center?
There was, there was a discussion about that. I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that landed, but there was concerns about the childcare center as well, that the council member had expressed.
I mean, with the idea that this additional space might?
Winston?
I mean, it is, it's deeply troubling to me that, I mean, we gave a fair amount of careful thought to this. Anthony, you gave a lot of thought to this, and I think we had very good planning arguments for the appropriateness of reducing the zoning designation. So are we the planning commissioner, or what?
There's a city charter that gives to the council.
I know, I know, I know, I know, but, I mean, we're in, we're in very interesting times now.
It is our understanding that the applicant was able to come to an agreement with the city council over the fate of the daycare center that is located there. The applicant himself is a, provides office space for community facilities, so has experience with that, and in those negotiations was able to come to an agreement with the council that resulted in the modification.
Okay. Thank you for filling that in.
Sure.
And so I.
We do have future votes. Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
On this, sharing Commissioner Levin's reluctance, I must nonetheless ask for an assent by show of hands to let the council know that this, what we believe is ill-planned, modification is within scope. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Moving on to future votes, December 4th, we have 43 Ward's Point Avenue and 527 Ocean Terrace and Staten Island scheduled for a decision. On December 18th, we have some landmarks. I will read them out for everyone, and we can have discussion if necessary. The Summers Brothers Tinware Factory in Brooklyn, Community District 6. The Brooklyn Rapid Transit Company Central Power Station Engine House, also in Brooklyn, Community District 6. Montauk Paint Manufacturing Company Building. The Guanis Canal Flushing Tunnel Pumping Station and Gate House. And the American Society for the Preservation, Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Brooklyn Office Shelter and Garage, all in Brooklyn, Community District 6. If there were any questions, the material is in your package. And then, the post-hearing follow-up, we had the 105 Duane Street Pops. I don't believe there are, are there any further questions on that?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Yes, that concludes the review session.
One getting home.
For Monday, December 2nd. The time is 4:03.